Seeing the presence of a quorum, calling to order this meeting of the Amherst-Pellam Regional School Committee at 6:35 PM. The first item of business normally would be approval of the minutes of January 14th, 2020, but with the committee's indulgence, we're going to pull down the minutes and consider them next time. So, we'll deal with that next time. And I think the law also probably means there'll be revised minutes in your next packet. So, the next item on our agenda is very exciting. Who is introducing? You're introducing?
Yeah.
The MSAN Student Experience, this is a great opportunity to hear from our student leaders about some of their important work. Thank you.
So, I'll briefly introduce this topic. So, for those who don't know, MSAN is a minority student achievement network. It's a network of schools, 25, 26 school districts across the country. We are founding members that have a deep interest and appreciation and work that goes into the educational debt that we owe parts of our student body. And part of that association with MSAN involves a student conference, actually, the highlight, I would say, although the professional development's great, the highlight is the student conference that occurs each fall in different sites around the country. And it's an opportunity for students who are part of an MSAN group, in our school, MSAN class, to participate in working together as well as with other students from across the other MSAN districts in the country to deepen their understandings and to come up with an action plan when they return. I think with that, I'll introduce-
Dr. Morris? I'm sorry, I apologize. I should've mentioned at the very beginning, and this is relevant only because it's probably of interest to the people who'll be speaking, that we are actually being currently recorded and broadcast live townwide in Amherst and Pellam. So, it's available on demand from amherstmedia.org afterwards. So, I apologize for that. I'm supposed to announce that, but also, it's kind of cool. People are going to be watching you now, which is wonderful. In addition to us. So, Dr. Morris, please.
Absolutely. And I think with that, I'll maybe just briefly introduce Ms. Custard. So, Ms. Custard works at the high school and has been with MSAN since the beginning, 20 years. And so, I don't know if you'd like to do a brief introduction of the students who are speaking tonight?
They may introduce themselves.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Custard. So, I'll allow the MSAN students to come up and introduce themselves and talk about their experience.
You need to go to the microphone, right?
Yep. So, if you are going to speak, just because otherwise, we could hear you, but the TV people won't be able to hear you. If you could just speak into the microphone, and you all can take it away.
My name is Randy Savelli. I'm a senior here. And I'm going to be talking about Mandela Barnes, who's the first black lieutenant governor of Wisconsin. And he was basically the first speaker we got to hear. So, I found it really surprising, first of all, kind of, that he was the first black lieutenant governor. And I thought it was like a real honor to be in his presence and listen to what he wanted to tell us. So, the main argument of his speech was that the best thing we can do as people of color in response to injustice is to be successful. I think he said success is the best revenge. So, I really found that to be a powerful message. Particularly, he stressed the importance of voting and even running for office as a reaction to seeing problems in your community. He said that if you're not at the table, you're not on the menu, basically meaning that if you're not voicing your concerns and telling people, "This is what I think should be done about it," then they're not going to be met. So, he also brought up the fact that failure and setbacks are inevitable, but they should be used as motivation to further achieve your goals, which I thought was a really good point. And I felt really inspired by his words, especially his call to action and his belief that everyone's voice matters, which was another thing that someone else in the MSAN group will talk about. Dr. Bettina Love, who is another one of the keynote speakers there, that was another thing that she was really passionate about, that each person's voice matters. And yeah, it was something that was really stressed throughout the entire conference, that we should put our voices out there and that that's the best way to make change. So, that was something I took away from it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Monica Cage, and I'm a junior at the school. Someone who really stood out to me during this conference was a man named Marlon Anderson. He was a security guard at Madison West High School in Wisconsin. And he was fired from his job as a security guard because the school has a zero tolerance policy set in place for any use of any racial slur. And the situation was that there was a fight that he had to break up, and the student called him the N-word, and he was like, "Do not call me the N-word." And so, instead of the school seeing it as a defense, they decided that the zero tolerance policy would have to be put in place and that he would lose his job, even though he worked there for 11 years. And they didn't take his story into account. The zero tolerance policy, this was one of the first times that I was hearing about it. And through that situation, it showed me that it's maybe equal, and it like targets everyone who says it. So, the word would just be, or all of those words would just not be in anyone's vocabulary anymore. But I feel like it should depend on the situation, and they should've like looked at that differently, considering that he lived there, I mean, that he worked there for 11 years and that he was a very important part of that school. And so, how that situation was resolved was his 18-year-old son and the Black Student Union at that school were then, after like rallying and gathering the community, they now sit on their school committee and they have to decide the policies along with the people in charge, so that policies like that can be looked over and that everyone thinks they're fair. So, that's what I took away from that experience.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Phoenix Vera Ford. I'm a 10th grader at Amherst Regional High School. And the speaker that I'll be talking about, his name was Jose Gonzalez. He was a teacher in the Tuscan Unified School District and Xanax Institute for Teaching and Organizing. And his goal was to teach culturally-reverent American history, advocates for ethnic studies. And he was a Chicano, and he felt that, being a Chicano, that people like him should know their history and their background. And that's not fair if they don't get to learn their history like everyone else. And at his school, it was very unjust because there were metal detectors and police guards always searching their students. Like, five-year-olds were getting arrested, pretty much, well, not arrested, but searched severely because they thought that they were dangerous. And I believe that that is wrong, and so did he. So, the students at his school started protesting, and for many years, they finally won the right to teach cultural studies there. And yeah, that was my main take back from the MSAN conference.
Hello. My name is Brendan. I'm a junior. What I got from the MSAN conference is just, one, a lot of experience, just being around people who have the same resemblance as me is very warm. It's just very comforting. But also, what I've learned from the keynote speakers is, one from Mr. Brown, is that African-Americans and minority groups in multiple demographics can find power through numbers. And he really just broke down into how like, black people and like other minority groups can like find this like sort of power and like, how can I say, this change for like more further equality through like financial dependence, and just talked about how like, if we looked at the statistics, African-Americans and other like minority groups have a lot of like involvement in like social, economical, and other like areas of work that like America like runs. So, if we like all, like if the minority groups come together, like we can make a huge difference and just make a huge change through this like kind of dependence in those fields. And then also, another like group that I've, or another keynote speaker that I've got a lot from is just like Dr. Bettina Love, who taught me about the abolitionist mindset, which is basically to have a more revolutionary way of thinking and just find ways in where, find wrongs in the system, and just be more like straightforward in how you contest them, like confront them, and how to deal with them. And just to be less hesitant with the way you act. And then also, just to talk about like how, if, how like white people should be more involved in like racial issues and how like, it's called white co-conspirating. And pretty much the idea of it is to, rather than just supporting the actions or supporting like better change for minority groups, it's more so being involved in it and directly helping it, because it is the privilege or the hierarchy that white people have that will always like assist in civil rights and equity disputes.
Hi. My name is Benito. I'm in 11th grade. And something that I took away from this, from this experience was, was from Dr. Bettina Love. And she talked about this importance of strength, of the strength of your identity because of whatever, because of what's happening in this world, how like minorities get like, like all this stuff that happens to minorities and that. It make, it gives minorities more power to be proud of your identity and be proud of who you are and of your history, rather than whatever happens to, what happens to them. And another thing that I learned from Dr. Bettina Love was that if you're truly anti-racist, you'll speak truth to power, and that's going to make people uncomfortable and you won't be well-liked. But that means that you're, you're going to make a change if, if you, if you speak out against something that, that's just wrong. And the more people who, who don't like you for it, it means that, that you're going to change their mind as well. So, yeah.
Hi. My name's Junior. I'm in 11th grade. One thing I took away from this MSAN conference was from Dr. Bettina Love, talking about how the education, education system today is a survival complex amongst colored students. And that would be because of the fact of lack of opportunity and resources that, you know, we try to receive and like try to work for, but you know, we're not always heard. You know, sometimes it's easier to do nothing, and that's what most do, but you know, Dr. Bettina Love really talked about getting your voice out there, speaking up, and getting to be heard and known. That way, you can get your chances and really like just take advantage of what you can. That way, you can get further in your education. That was really just my main takeaway from all of it.
So, I think if the committee has any questions, I know if students have other things that they need to get to tonight, and thank you for the committee for having the students go first. But if there are questions that, either for myself or for students, I imagine they'd be open to answering them.
Questions from the committee?
Or comments, I should say.
Spitzer.
I just wanted to say, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear about your experience. And I'm, I mean, you're just in front of a bunch of elected officials, and if there's anything in particular, you know, pieces of advocacy you wanted to bring back to your local community, if there's any like takeaways that you're going to be, actions you're thinking about taking when you, when you're back in school, I'd be curious.
So, I just want to say a few words. They did not mention their action plan, but it is to bring Dr. Bettina Love here. She actually is coming to UMass in May, and I've been in contact with her since the conference because she said, "I'm coming." I said, "Well, we don't have money." And she said, "We'll, we'll worry about that later. Don't worry. I do want to speak to your students." So, we don't have her itinerary yet. However, if, if we can bring her here, that would be the best, but if not, we would like to take a major field trip to hear her at UMass. So, that's what our action plan is.
That's great. That's wonderful. Any other comments? Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. Well, I have a million questions, but so, I'll spare everyone's time. But yeah, I just want to say I'm very impressed with you guys. I'm inspired by you young folks, so I think we have a pretty good future ahead of us here. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I just want to echo the comments that Ms. Spitzer and Mr. Harrington made. I also just want to acknowledge, not too many more years I'll be able to do this, that I knew some of these students when they were quite a bit younger, Crocker Farm. And so, what's inspiring to everyone from hearing their speech, their talks tonight is, is particularly inspiring for me from knowing some of these folks when they were quite young and seeing how much, how they've grown into advocacy and leaders in the high school has been incredibly inspiring. So, thank you all for the work you're doing, both being in MSAN, but also, thank you for the work you're doing at our high school. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And thank you. Can I do one more thanks? I'm sorry. Just before we do it, I should give a big round of, I would ask everyone to give a big round of applause to Ms. Custard, who facilitates and organizes this work. At the 20th year anniversary of MSAN, not only was Ms. Custard asked to be a speaker to the adults involved in MSAN, but also was about the most popular person in the room with people who really value her work and her leadership from across the country in different MSAN districts. So, we are, we are greatly indebted to Ms. Custard for her work on this and in other areas, but thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. Wonderful. So, the next item on our agenda is committee announcements and public comments. Are there any announcements from members of the school committee at this time? Mr. Harrington?
Yes, I just wanted to publicly disclose that I'm an Amherst Public Schools employee and that I work in the Facilities Department as the Assistant Facilities Director. Oh, and that I've actually filed my public disclosure with the Town Council.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Yes? Spencer?
I would just like to say that I contacted the town clerk in Pellam to find out the deadline for the warrant, the town warrant for town meeting, and they don't have it. They're meeting tonight to plan the schedule, and she's going to call me tomorrow. So, I will email that when I have it.
Thank you.
Great. So, next would be public comments. If there are any comments from members of the public, please come forward. Just as a note, there's a later public comment specifically about Item 3A, which is on our bus contract and electric buses. But otherwise, if there's, I mean, one can talk about that if you want to. There's another comment on it later, public comments. But if there's anyone who has a public comment, they can come forward that have three minutes to speak, please identify yourself and come on up to the microphone and, and welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kathleen Anderson. I'm a 50th generation USer. I am a fourth-generation undergraduate and a third-generation master's degree holder. I'm also a former school committee member, a former human rights commissioner, and a past president of the Amherst NAACP. My comments are related to what the MSAN students spoke about this evening. But I want to start by reading something that is stated on the Amherst Regional School website, and that is, "Our mission is the academic achievement of every student, learning in a system dedicated to social justice and multiculturalism." One thing that the students spoke, the MSAN students spoke about as relates to their trip to Wisconsin is about the idea of whiteness. And I want to suggest and have us consider that our district, living up to its mission, needs to really have, in addition to the MSAN group, they need to have students, white students who are, are willing and able to stand up to the idea of whiteness, will address it forthcomingly, will address it strictly with every ounce of energy they have, because it is the idea of whiteness that has created the unjust system that we're living in today. And so, it will take a generation of white people who are willing to stand up. I want to also shout out some names of authors that will be helpful. Authors, not only authors, but they're educators. That would be Paul Gorski, Jane Elliott, Tricia Rose, Robin D'Angelo, Tim Wise, Shannon Sullivan, are all national speakers and educators. And I wanted to share some local names. You may recognize some of them. Ruthie Killowhill, Russ Vernon Jones, Michael Burkhart. Each of the names of the, the first set of names, the national leaders have materials available online. I encourage you to do some research, look at them. A group of people led by Paula Green have been doing hands across the valley, or hills, or mountains, or something, with a group of people from Kentucky, is it? Kentucky. They give an example of how to engage across difference or similarities. And another action that has been successful in our town is the Study Circle's Dialogues on Race and Class. And if people aren't familiar with that, the ending of each of those six-week sessions results in a next-step action that people in a community are willing to take. And one of the steps that resulted from our Study Circles in Amherst is the first day on the common. So, those are my comments, and I hope that the names of the educators I mentioned are people that you will look up and look at their work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Lauren Mills. I am a new member, not a voting member, but a new member of the School Equity Task Force, and I have written my comments because I do better when I write it down. So, during our discussions with Principal Jean Jones and other comments from community members who also work within the Amherst schools, I feel that a clearer definition of equity, equality, and privilege need to be, need to be addressed in our discussions about restorative justice. All things being equal, we know that in society, different people get treated differently by those in authoritative positions. Some are given privileges while others are denied. The historic case of Plessy versus Ferguson, a 1896 Supreme Court decision in which a man from Louisiana was arrested and jailed for refusing to sit in a separate railway car for black people sued because he felt his protection of the 14th Amendment was violated. The Supreme Court at this time ruled that a law that implies merely a legal distinction between blacks and whites was not unconstitutional. This case took place in Louisiana, where there was a large mixed-race population, and it was difficult to tell where the color line could be divided. Because of this decision, Jim Crow laws and separate public accommodations became commonplace. The Supreme Court ruled that protections of the 14th Amendment applied only to political and civil rights, not social rights. Segregated public facilities over the next 50 years included buses, hotels, theaters, swimming pools, and schools. The right to equality education in public school is a civil right, and the Supreme Court decision of Brown versus Board of Education established this. Those in charge of resources, services in school have a huge part to, in making sure that individual students and groups get treated fairly. And because things have not been fair for so long, sometimes it's hard to imagine how a fair educational system would work. My definition of privilege is when adequate resources are given to one group, majority by institutions, and are denied to others because those in power and accountable do not feel like a group deserves a resource based on some past or made-up reason in order to exclude and maintain control. Many times, the group that lacks privilege does not use its voice, does not have representation in these institutions. How do we provide equity to many students, move toward equality without making the mistake that equity means that everyone has the same needs and thus should be given the same robotic way of discipline and educational access? Equity, the quality of being fair, meaning when it comes to civil liberties such as education, dignity, seen in the eyes of educators, students are given fair, impartial treatment that does not hinder them, sorry, does not hinder them access to a full education. That means work must be done to impact our own biased thoughts and suspicions when it comes to students with social disadvantage. In the Amherst public schools, we do not expect each student to have the same measure of success, but we should expect all students to succeed. Our public schools should have in place ways to overcome some of the obstacles, whether because of being in an environment that is more stressful, because some students are seen as a minority, or the culture is not something they are familiar with because they come from a different country, speak a different language. For students who identify as belonging to the black community, historically have been denied education, been mistreated because of what, what their skin represents. a living, freedom to travel, protected under the civil laws, seen as human, as children. When it comes to the restorative justice program, I believe that those students and the work of the program should not be compared to the other student groups or clubs. And the stipends given to the RJ students and any other opportunities provided should not be withheld because other groups may not have stipends. The RJ student group is doing community building, social justice work that should be seen as powerful. Financial assistance is an incentive and necessary to keep an organization going that wants to see positive results and fulfill its goals. Social justice work is heartfelt work. If there is a problem for students to get stipends, then it could be argued that no one in the restorative justice program should receive a salary. Thank you.
Further public comments?
Do we have some more time?
Yeah, you do. Just as a reminder, the comments are supposed to be three minutes long.
Yeah. So, I just, I'm not even going to take that much time because I'm going to do the presentation later. So, I'm Karidad Martinez, and I live in Belchertown. I have family here in Amherst. My grandchildren don't go to the school district, but they go to school in Amherst. And I am a member of the School Equity Task Force. I've been on it since it started. And I'm also a family and child advocate here in the Amherst school districts. So, I support families with children who are in IEPs. And Mike knows that our, our work isn't just on special education, but it, it kind of also is very holistic, and we talk about race and class and all that when we, when we meet with teachers and staff and people. So, I guess the point I just wanted to make real quickly is, first of all, I want to thank the two speakers. I want to thank Lauren for her allowing herself to be so vocal. I want to thank Lauren for her allowing herself to be so vulnerable and to be able to do this. And this is vulnerable work. This is work that really touches our souls and touches us in ways that, you know, isn't required. It is required. It is required for us to be able to feel that. And that isn't always easy. Sometimes we shut down. So it's wonderful when someone can do that because it opens up our senses and it kind of begins, right? So I just, I'm here to support the parent that's right behind me because we worked together in, in the very first circle that was ever done here, Indigenous Circle Practice, which was kind of the precursor to eventually having a program.
Hi, my name is, my name is Kim Campbell. And I don't quite remember what year it was that my son returned to this school. And my son is biracial, came back to Amherst High School, and he was targeted all the time. I mean, all the time. And I was blessed to meet Karida in Holyoke because we left Amherst High School and moved to Holyoke because my son played basketball, played AAU. He wanted to go to a city where there was more black people. I didn't want to go to Springfield, so I said, okay, I'll move to Holyoke for you. Gave him the benefit of the doubt, we moved to Holyoke. I met Karida, and my son started messing up there, going down the wrong path. I said, we're going back to Amherst. We came back here. He was targeted all the time. They didn't even want to let him in the school. He never got into a fight with anybody, but he was always wrongfully accused of doing things, which I don't know. He came to school every day, played basketball, he was at practice every day. And it was, it was a terrible, terrible three years of my life, going through it with him. And all I heard from the higher people in this school was, he's never going to graduate. He's never going to make it. And I said over my dead body, he will get an Amherst High School diploma, and he did. And then he went on with Karida's help. He went on to GCC. He's doing great things now. He's doing good, good with his, with his life right now. And I just want to say how important it is that this school keeps the, the restorative justice, justice circle because it helps those kids that need the help. Because like when he was wrongfully accused one time of stealing a backpack, which he had nothing to do, he was leaving weight, the weight room, he was leaving a class, he was accused by the athletic director of stealing a backpack. My son said, I didn't do it. The guy kept getting in his face. My son is not one to take disrespect from anybody or like treat it like crap or violate it. He's just, he's not going to take it. So he got back in his face, police were involved, my son was on probation because of that. And because of all of this stuff, they started the, the circle. This woman from Holyoke, right, came and said this helps. And I mean, it, it was great because instead of involving the police or authority, people need to learn to communicate, talk about it. You don't, you know, you don't have to use your, abuse your power of authority and just, you know, because you're the principal or you're whoever in the high school that you can just disrespect these black kids. It's just, it's, it's not right. It's like, it, it's just, and when you look, when you look, you look at society, it's like, it's, it's, they're always, most, most of them are just wrongfully accused. It's like, it's, and it's sad. And we need to keep that circle going in this high school for those kids and people who need it the most. So it could be worked out that way instead of them having to go to court or police getting involved. It just doesn't need to happen. It really doesn't.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no further public comments at this time, we'll close public comment. We have a couple more items before we get to new and continuing business for the School Equity Task Force, although I realize it's topical at the moment. We'll, we'll get there in just a little bit. Superintendent's update.
So I think Ms. Cunningham and I will be brief, given what you just shared. So, and there's nothing in the packet, really, tonight. So just something that I've talked about a couple times, I want to update the committee is the seal of illiteracy and the work going on. And so specific to the regional schools, there were lunches held at the middle school and high school over the last few weeks to share information and opportunities with students. There's about 35 students who attended that session at the high school and 40 who attended at the middle school because, again, the seal of illiteracy has more meaning at the, graduating with the diploma, but it, there's an eighth grade aspect to it as well. And so we have students who are signing up to be in, doing lunches at sixth, eighth, and twelfth grade, and that's an advance of what's called the stamp test that students take in April, and that's a state assessment that if they pass it, they're able to get that seal on their diploma. So good work from Ms. Richardson and ELL staff on that. Just an update that the fire department was in, just an update from something I shared last time. They did their audits last week. I'm looking, sorry, don't want to confuse roles, Mr. Harrington, but I believe it was last week, and the feedback we received was, was positive that the substantive changes that occurred as per their recommendations. We also have received a kind of large metal box that you might notice outside the high school because one of the area was the theater department's props. We don't have a great area that sprinkled at the high school to maintain those, so we've come up with a creative solution to, to resolve that one. We have two vaping information sessions coming, so one is February 3rd for elementary and middle school students, or families, excuse me, and then February 24th for high school students as well. And the last meeting of the grade span advisory was on January 13th, and more to come in the next, when we get to upcoming agendas, I think we can talk a bit more detail about that. I think Ms. Cunningham has something that she'd like to share briefly as well.
So the only update that I have is that in 2017, the food service department returned back in-house to our district, and at that time, we negotiated a two-year contract. This year it's up, and so we've opened negotiations once again. And we've already met once to decide on dates and propose topics, and so we'll continue with the process, and I'll keep you updated.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none. Next item would be chairs update. There's no chairs update. When's, when's the four-time meeting?
The four-time meeting is this Saturday at nine o'clock in the middle school library. Typical time, typical place, nine, nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay. I guess I'm mentioning that because we don't, anyone needed a reminder.
Yeah.
Is there a pre-meeting like in the last one?
So I think that'll come up topically on Agenda Item 7B, which is FY21 budget presentation. And Mr. Schlatter and I plan to kind of share where, what our current thinking, at least when we put this presentation, was and gather feedback from the committee on multiple topics, and that being one of them.
Something we'll look forward to from later on in the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, subcommittee updates. Ms. Spencer.
I just wanted to report that the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation, subcommittee just met, and we worked out a tentative timeline that I'm planning to share with the superintendent, and then hopefully if it's, if it looks like it works for him, we'll share it at the next meeting.
Great. Other subcommittees? Yes.
It's not really an update, but other than to say that the policy subcommittee is going to be meeting on Monday evening at 5:45 in the middle school superintendent's conference room, and I believe we have a couple agenda items that are already posted, so.
Cool. It's always good to like, that's why I brought the four-time meeting thing. It's like repetition. It's not the worst thing to remind people they have a meeting coming up that they need to attend. Uh, great. So now, we're going to be on to new and continuing business. Item 7A, School Equity Task Force presentation. So we're, whoever is up, we're, we'd love to hear from you.
So my name is Mary Lou Conca. I'm from Shootsbury. We have a final draft of a proposal that has taken quite a bit of effort to put together. I'll start out by reading the, the beginning of it. Okay, so the restorative-
You should know that we're not going to read the whole thing.
Right. That's why, that's why we're giving you, it's a six-
Yeah, no, no, we have the whole thing here, but we're, we're just, we're, we just want to hear from you, so we're just listening. Don't mind, if we don't do anything, it's because we're listening.
Six-page document, and to say paper, we put it back to back. The Restorative Justice Budget Proposal, January 28, 2020. All right, starting out with your own mission statement. "Our mission is the academic achievement of every student learning in a dedic-, in a system dedicated to social justice and multiculturalism. The Amherst School District is demonstrating its commitment to practicing the principles of social justice through the implementation and continued support of the restorative justice RJ program, both in the middle and high school. The RJ program is a revolutionary way of transforming traditional discipline that has been proven to marginalize and discriminate against students of color, poor white students, and children with individual educational programs, IEPs." And I'm going to ad lib here, if I might, for a minute. I have a unique standpoint wherein I'm the mother of a white child who went through this system, kay, and graduated. I'm also the grandmother of a black child who went through this system, kay, through high school, graduated. And it's remarkable to me to have witnessed, experienced, and, and, suffered the consequences to be able to see firsthand. My white son, he, he would do things and he, this, you know, you're mischievous. My black grandson would do the, they're raised in the same family, same family values, same, he would do things, and, and he was targeted. He received in, in a, in a two-year period, I did the math, it came out to just about weekly, getting one of your referrals. And then the QLC that you have, we, we had to dig through high water to find out, to find out how many times he was being sent there. And that's just about, that's equivalent to a quarantine room. I don't know if you even know about that, the QLC. Okay. I'll get back on track to the paper. Through the indigenous circus practice in youth particip-, I'm sorry.
Definitely not circus.
Circle.
Oh, God.
And youth participatory action research as core practices, RJ works to build youth power, center student voice, and to actively include families and the community in supporting the lives of young people. Members of Oasis who advocate on behalf of marginalized students kick-started the route to RJ by intervening in a case with the student who had been targeted by adults in the Amherst Regional High School and who had been referred to the criminal justice system, of which you have just heard testimony. Oasis members recruited the help of the then co-director of the Holyoke High School Restorative Justice Program, Palente, who facilitated several circle sessions with the student, family members, the high school principal, administrative staff, and advocates to address the situation. The judicial system was very much supportive of this whole process, which resulted in the dropping of criminal charges. Therein, we interrupted the school-to-prison pipeline, as well as renewal of working relationships between all of those involved. All right, so you, you have the paper.
I'll, I'll just continue a little bit. Alisa Melnick. Hi. "After many meetings, much research, and continued advocacy, an RJ program began in September 2017 at the Amherst High School and in September of 2019 at the middle school. During the fall of 2019, a focus group of adult students and students from the Amherst community participated in a focus group facilitated by SETF members to identify areas of importance to the RJ program. The current goals, recommendations, and budget proposal has been informed by that, by the data gathered from that focus group. Along with the continuous work of past groups such as Vision Keepers, Oasis, and Radar, these groups have brought attention to gaps that exist in Amherst Public Regional High Schools, carrying out its mission and endeavor to find solutions to challenges that remain in the Amherst education system. This progress demonstrates the commitment of school personnel and administration to the growth and effectiveness of this program. The initial proposal included a district-wide program, and we see this becoming a reality. We believe that the RJ program strongly supports Amherst Regional Public School, School, uh, social justice commitment, as it does the policy mission statement as outlined on the website, the school website." I'm just going to skip a little bit. As many of you recall from the presentation that we had here last year with the students who were involved in the RJ program, they restore balance where harm has been made. The circle, the RJ circle, the program, and the circle practice is about honoring the knowledge and experience that young people and their families bring, and building on that. It is about, it is about collectively creating community values and practices. As an alternative to disciplinary, disciplinary practices like expulsion, suspensions, and referrals by administrators, restorative justice shifts the focus from discipline and punishment to learning, and from a focus on the individual to a focus on the community. An effective RJ program simultaneously creates structures for the critical analysis of the historical and social conditions of oppression, race, power, privilege, through the implementation of YPAR, which is the Youth Participatory Action Research Projects, and indigenous originated circle practices. These practices, through these practices, young people with the support of caring and knowledgeable adults are able to research problems in these schools and in our community, and create tangible actions to make systemic changes in this environment."
Sure. So I think one of the things that really is important about restorative justice so that it has that possibility is that, so restorative justice is, is indigenous circles, circle practice was introduced into the justice system through indigenous people. And one of the, one of the videos that I sent you, Mahalung River, talks a little bit about Phil Gatzinsby, and that's one of the people. And so interestingly enough, and we don't talk enough about this, but I love, you know, the new research and all the things coming up around neuroscience, right, and how our brain responds to trauma, and how, and so I love it because I love to read, and I, but you know, the interesting thing is, we should connect it, that indigenous people for thousands of years kind of knew that. And we are all, we are all people that come from indigenous communities. We were all, all our people from the past, at some point were indigenous communities that lived in certain spaces for thousands of years, and we all had practices, right? And here in the United States, the, many of the nations and tribes that were here before European colonization were, had already developed really amazing ways of, of, of social democracy. And that was interrupted in colonization. And I'm not going to say that all the indigenous tribes were all, no, that's, you know, that's not, but many of them were very, very advanced, you know, and that was interrupted. And what happens is that with restorative justice, when it's practiced, because I have to say when it's practiced in a way that is true to its roots and true to what a, a circle is, that's why I made sure that it said indigenous circles, because circles have also been very much appropriated by white supremacist institutions, ACHA, everybody at this point in history, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, it is what it is. And- And now many people are looking to the past to use things that our ancestors used in the present in order to begin the healing work that is required for us to fundamentally change this society. And, um, and we all know what's going on in the world, and we all know what's going on here in Amherst and everywhere. And so I, I want to bring that back to that place where the worldview and the philosophy that comes from these practices is a worldview and a philosophy that we all should really think about adapting to our own lives, not even just in the schools, but into our families. And I want to name Jerika Coffey, who was the person who facilitated that circle. And just an amazing, amazing Chicana educator. I want to recognize her husband, who is now deceased, Antonio Martinez-Nieves, who was very instrumental in, um, supporting the Youth Participatory Acts and Research Projects through UMass, because he was a professor at UMass in Holyoke-Palante. So one of my, one of my desires is that RJ here, and I know that my friend here already is very much connected to Palante, Evelyn, and that we collaborate closely with them, Mike, because I feel that they have a lot of knowledge and a lot of knowledge from people that really are, you know, they learned from people that really knew what they were talking about. And collaboration across districts with young people is the leadership of the 21st century. Like, we should not be working in isolation. And we should be working in solidarity with people that are doing it and sharing resources and that kind of thing. And so I'm hoping that that happens. So I already went through all that, but I wanted to say just one thing about trauma. And then Evelyn is going to talk, because Evelyn coordinates the middle school RJ program. So RJ recognizes that trauma has devastating and continuous effects on the individual, their family, and the social environment in which we live. Therefore, RJ supports the healthy development of students' social and emotional skills by fostering open, honest communication and affords the opportunities for youth, families, teachers, staff, and community to deepen their understanding of oneself, each other, and our connection to the global community. Restorative circles provide space for youth and people to share their suffering and move towards healing, thus recovering the capacity to engage in the world with trust, hope, and self-confidence.
Greetings, my name is Evelyn Aquino, and I am the climate and culture coordinator at the middle school. And I have been ushered in definitely by the support of the school equity task force to make this happen at the middle school. I was also, um, a mentor coach to DW, who started the program, and I was able to continue it. I was a guest. We, we got a grant through AEF to start a class, which was training the young people around restorative justice, and those are the young leaders that many of you were able to have the honor of sitting in a circle with. So, um, just a little bit in terms of where we are at the middle school, I'm happy to report that the QLC does not have the same reputation that it has had, that our suspension numbers are down. I am honored to work with a phenomenal dean who is also trained and experienced in restorative justice. So the middle school right now is in absolute functioning with this. Not that we never suspend anyone, there are situations that call for that, but the numbers are completely down and our approach to, um, discipline has been from a restorative justice place. So whether the dean gets called in, has, um, practices restorative questions with the young person, what happened, checks in, and then passes it on to me to hold a circle with students, student and a teacher. We had our first circle recently with a group of students, um, and parents and basketball coach. It was very powerful, the parents were incredibly, their eyes were wide open at the process after coming in, not having any idea what they were going to experience, but were blown away, um, one, because they had never experienced this in school after many years of probably rather traditional, um, discipline with their students in elementary school, but also just the process of sitting, um, it also can be very long for everyone to be heard. But it is a process where we sit down and we get to the heart of the matter. And we encourage and invite everyone to speak from their heart. And in that way, getting to the place of, why did this happen? Where did this come from? Both harmed and the harmer. And be able to get to a place where like, wow, I definitely wasn't my best self, wow. And, um, more than anything, it's about communing, connecting with the humanity of each individual. And the adults and the students who get the opportunity, both if it's a teacher and a student, and the teacher's so used to, you know, coming from the place of compliance, and the student wasn't complying, and the student being able to share, I could barely get up this morning. I could barely, you know, school to me is like the last thing on my mind because I'm in survival mode. And for a teacher to hear that and be like, wow, it's bigger than compliance, it's bigger than sort of the, I don't want to say than the academics, but when a student isn't heard or seen or feel valued, ain't nothing coming in. You know, what, what is a, how a sentence is structured, or how an essay is on something completely, we won't even get into cultural competence, of the learning, being able to connect to the reality of so many of our students. I just started, um, I'm very happy, I just started the, the Restorative Justice Leadership Class at the middle school today. And when we went around in the circle, so many students were just like, I just want to talk about the reality that we live today because so much in our classrooms is about the past. This, how can we lead and how can we be future leaders if we never talk about how we're experiencing the world today? That was very profound, and I am honored and, um, and so humbled to sit in circles with young people who can speak from their heart, not scripted, not right and wrong, but to just say, I want to make a difference in this world. But how am I going to learn that if all I'm doing is being taught from the test? So being given the opportunity to connect and speak as human beings, experiencing this life, experiencing this time and day that many of us adulter, trying to make sense of, and creating space for them to sit together and not only speak for themselves, but to hear each other. So one thing that I would love to clarify and to make clear, when we talk about restorative justice, it's about honoring the humanity of each individual and, you know, in our schools and in our district. And that circle practice is a, is a way, and one way of that is building community and creating those spaces where we can share, and we can speak, and we can listen to one another. And then using that, after it becoming a practice, that we then involve in resolving conflict. That then we then resolve when there's been harm. So it's not, circles are not only for when there's been harm, but that the practice of honoring the humanity of everyone in the room, everyone in the school community, and then using the circle, let's, let's come back to circle, let's come back to center. After that practice has been practiced, um, I'm happy to say, we introduced circle and I was able to train teachers around incorporating circles into advisories. We're still a work in progress and clearly a paradigm shift. But there's strong efforts from teachers really trying to do it, really trying to build that in. And many students are really appreciating that time, especially when it's honored, when it's a sacred experience versus something that just needs to get done and get over with, students feel the difference. And I think more than anything, the more we can listen to them and honor that, the less we'll have to be like, all these students, or, and all of those reactions. Because I, if you could just take a moment and think about your middle school years, and I'm only going to speak for the middle school, although I worked with high school, which was very similar, was, there is so much going on, there is so much pressure from this way and that way of compliance, of six, what success is, of what you're supposed to be producing and who you're supposed to be being. And then when you're experiencing life, then what? And many of them, I mean, I would love to speak to you further, I'm not going to take much more time, but our high school students and our middle school students are crying out for spaces where they can be honored in their humanity. And they are always so excited to have the opportunity, even if they were the ones that were wrong. They're just like, thank you, I, I wouldn't, you know, I didn't, I didn't know, or I didn't have a good day today. And it's all about building those skills for life, for building, for living in community, and for, you know, feeding our leaders the opportunity to truly lead us in a humane way. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, 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 if you have a couple more minutes?
Yes, yeah, we're wrapping it up. Yep, we're wrapping it up. Thank you, Evelyn, and, you know, who better said than the people that are doing it?
Yeah, it's wonderful.
And so, um, so the recommendations that we're making are all data-driven, right? So they, they are informed by input from stakeholders directly tied to the program. In the fall of 2019, SCTF conducted a focus group with people who are at the center of the RJ program, students, staff, RJ staff and administration. And during the workshop, all participants documented their responses to share their vision for RJ, discuss its success, and declare what is needed to continue to overcome its challenges. So the RJ program requires, really does, a structured and concerted effort to organize, coordinate, and provide the necessary financial support for the program across the district and across building coordinators. So using that information gathered from those most involved in the program, we request a, we, we request several things. And, um, in order to support the ongoing and clear need for a more organized and cohesive approach to growing the program across the district, we envision focus group members, so the people that are on the ground, envision that all six elementary schools, Fort River, Wildwood, Crocker Farm, Chutes Ferry, Leavitt, and Pelham will benefit from a coordinated and inclusive restorative justice program to support the continued growth and understanding of students and families as they grow through the grades and through the different schools. So in, according to the findings of our district-wide focus group, participants proposed the following plan. We're not going to discuss the monies, they are down there somewhere, uh, at the end. But we're just going to go, I'm going to quickly read through, um, the, the plan, and then we'll end there, okay? We, uh, we propose the hiring of a district-wide restorative justice co-director to support the coordination of the present programs. And that could be a part-time or full-time, depending on, um, on what is needed. The hiring of a co-director of youth organizer to support relationships between families, students, and the school. Really quickly, Jerika had a youth organizer. She, she was a youth organizer the last year that she was at Palante. And that specific, um, role was to connect outside of the school with families and students. So there were visits to home, and so that, that is a really, uh, important role. And we can learn more from Palante from, about how, you know, they did that. So financial and resource support for YPAR projects on a continuous basis. So youth participatory acts and research, the, the, this committee has already approved doing that, and for whatever reason, we just haven't, it hasn't been done. So we need the support and we need, Mike, we need you to like, tell these people, gotta do it, right? You gotta do it, because this is where the learning takes place, the leadership and the learning from those students. And they get to identify what's going on here and what can we do. So it's from them, right? And so how important is that? Create and support paid youth internships. We heard Lauren talk about why. This is work. To do a YPAR is a research project. It is work. Support the development of ARHS and ARMS RJ students so they can design and deliver trainings for staff and students at the middle school and elementary levels with the intention of expanding the program across the district. A summer institute for ARPS youth. You know, I'm not going to go through all of them. It's, most of the things that we have listed here are about developing the leadership and the intellectual and academic and social, emotional, uh, um, lives of these young people. In solidarity and coordination, collaboration with adults. This is not a youth thing. Adults have to be present, they have to be educated, they have to be willing to work with young people to get this done. It's not, you know, this, this whole thing about young people here and no. This is a collaboration, a coordination. And, um, so that's pretty much it. I think that's what I want to focus, and, and the last thing I'll say, because it's all there. The last thing I do want to say is that the reason we think that RJ should be across the district is because we do want to see a fundamental shift in some of the disciplinary programs that you already have, that we feel are still punitive and they still come from a place that is different than where restorative justice comes from. And, you know, I have to tell you this story real quick because it happened in one of the middle schools and one of the students there, in one of the, it was the building blocks program. And so this family calls me the other day and tells me that their child was put in isolation in a room and that the child, the child urinated on themselves while in that room. I am not going to pass judgment on the individual teachers and people, administrators who made that decision. What I am is I'm going to suggest that we need to move away from those practices. That no child, under no circumstances, no matter what they're doing, whether they're kicking and, and, and just, you know, um, um, not complying, someone talked about compliance with the rules, you got to sit still, you got to do this, you can't run out, that under no circumstances should we be putting children in padded rooms so they can urinate on themselves. These parents are devastated. They are devastated. Restorative justice practices, restorative justice circles can be practiced even with children, right? Who appear to be not compliant, right? I'm going to use those words because I want to be careful, I don't want to use any of these negative words that people use about this. And so that's why we need your support. We need to continue developing this program. So if you have any other questions, please feel free to, if you all wanted to meet with us later on at some other point, I think we should meet with Mike Nakajima, Mr. Nakajima. I want to welcome, by the way, the new ones that are here, thank you for being here. Mr. Nakajima, you were here the first time we did our presentation. You suggested that we speak with Michael, and I think that that's something that we probably should do. We should say, we just didn't have time, we wanted to do that, but we just not, we did not have enough time to be able to do that. But to figure out how we can continue developing this program. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time. We're, we're running behind, if there were, I, I actually had the suggestion that follows, actually, from what was just said, that I would love it, Dr. Morse, if you could actually, uh, take the memo, work with your colleagues, and think about it, meet with the group, and then I'm, I'm certainly happy to participate, or others on the committee may be willing to as well, just to sort of take another cut at having this dialogue. And then, because essentially, the, the school committee, unless it wants to change its mind this year, and I don't see any reason it would, I'm just saying this out loud, we haven't debated it, but in, but has supported restorative justice program in the past, has, has supported its expansion, believes it's, it's useful. Other committees have heard about the use of restorative justice practices at the elementary level already. And so this is clearly something that philosophically is in alignment with where the district's going. So the question is, how do you take the next step, and what do you do? And how do you talk about doing that in a way that's supportive and is engaging the public, but also is working with our professional colleagues to do so?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think that's a good suggestion, you know, Ms. Cunningham and I'd be open to that conversation. I think, you know, to be very candid with you, I think when we get to item 7B, I'm going to need some guidance and advice from the school committee about, um, how that, what that looks like. And I'm not intending to have that conversation right now, but I want to be realistic that there was recommendations that have price tags attached, and you all are representatives of your member towns, and I need some feedback about that. So certainly we can loop back to that even tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, Ms. Donald.
I actually have a question about process.
Yes.
I mean, anyone can answer this, but I'm just, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so forgive me if I'm not, if this is already discussed. But, so we have like our standard budget process that the superintendent's described for us, where he works with the school administrators and department heads to come up with a budget, and that, that informs what we're going to talk about later. And then we have these budget proposals and, um, so like the, the district-wide focus group, the participants proposed. So I guess I'm just a little unclear as to, you know, which, uh, of, of the people that participated in the, in the mainline budget process, like the, say, the high school, um, principal, dean, um, RJ coordinators, um, et cetera, is, were, is this their, like, did they all review this list of specific budget proposals? Or, or was this just, was this voted on by the SCTF subcommittee? I get, so I, I just want to understand where, I get, like, you know, to what degree these are supported by, by the heads of the, the schools and the departments who, I mean, uh, uh, one, one item that stuck out to me in the budget presentation is that there's a 1.4 FTE reduction that the high school proposed as the, and so that's, that's a serious, you know, cut for us to consider. And so I'm just trying to balance out the two and what the sources are. So I thought it was long-winded, I just want to understand the process.
Okay. Oh, I don't actually have any idea. I know you're looking at the chair. Uh, I don't actually have any idea, uh, what I, what I was, Ms. McDonald? Are you raising your hand? Okay.
Um, I'm somewhat familiar with the process, and I don't know, you know, if the chair would, would be willing to hear from some of the folks that just presented, but I know within the, within the focus group, there were some individuals, and having not participated in the focus groups, I'm only talking about from what I know from the, from the couple meetings I was able to attend. But there were some individuals from the middle school and the RJ program in the schools that were part of that discussion and through pulling this together. Is it, I mean?
I, I, I wanted to, I wanted to actually move on simply because we're past our agenda time. And the hint I was offering, when I was suggesting, so at the end of the presentation, the SCTF folks who were present- folks who were presenting made the comment that they would have loved to have sat down with Dr. Morris in advance to go through the memo, didn't have a chance to do that. That hinted to me that the memo proposals were not actually synced up with the budget items that the superintendent was talking about later, and I was suggesting they should talk, and I was not getting ahead of 7B because I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest what happens in that conversation, I just simply think there should be one. The conversation, which this Dr. Morris said he agreed with. Briefly, just come on up to the microphone, just, if you can, just be, please be succinct if you can.
To answer your question, the SCTF did vote on this. So, we did vote on this. I'm sorry? Yes, so it was officially voted by the Subcommittee of U.R.
Right.
That you have now in front of you.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
So, we'll be in touch.
Sounds good. Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, what does this say? Well, look, it does say chairperson. I'm gonna hint at what we're doing next by sliding this little gavel between the two of us, which is gonna hint at a forthcoming action by you, I think.
So, we are now moving into a joint meeting, and so, seeing a presence of a quorum of the Amherst School Committee, I call the Amherst School Committee to order.
Cool. Okay, so the first item under our joint business is public comments specifically in item 3A under new and continuing business, which is bus contract, electric bus item. That's how it's titled. So, if there's anyone who has a public comment that would like to make it this time on this item, please come forward, you have three minutes to do so, and please identify yourself as you do. And welcome.
Hi, I'm Andrew Rose, and from Amherst, and I just wanted to report in on a really good conversation that we had today with Kerry Spitzer, Mike Morris, and two mothers out front members and two high school students, talking about electric buses and what the options are, not just about the contract, but what we, I feel like we came to was an understanding that we really are looking for creative solutions, not to compete with priorities that other, you know, that we all support. So, the idea of paying, you know, 230,000 on top of, you know, what the lowest bid was for the contract clearly makes no sense, and we don't want to argue for things that don't make sense. We want to proactively create sense that you wouldn't have gotten without that effort ahead of time. And we do have information, we have resources that we've reached out to and we could provide. So, I recently watched a Concord Carlisle, is that the name of their regional district meeting? It was just a couple days ago. They got the VW settlement funding for two more buses and two more electric buses, and I felt like, oh, you know, that's what could happen here. But they're leasing those buses, they can still use the settlement money for several years, 75% of the total cost, and I think they said they were gonna be out $30,000 per I'll verify it, I'll send you the tape, but there's options that we're not tapping here because of business as usual, you know, sending out RFP to the same people that, you know, are gonna bid, and they may not be educated about what the options are for them. Bus companies can actually get this VW settlement money, and that's something we have to know. So, and I look forward to, you know, continuing conversation, and we did talk about that possibility in an interesting forum, so, yeah, thanks.
So, next is new and continuing business, which is in fact a discussion to share information with the school committee about the cost of integrating bus usage. Dr. Morris, you gonna?
Sure, and I'll apologize, I'm not feeling as well as I'd like tonight, but, so I'll try to be as clear as I can be. So, the reason this is a joint meeting, just to clarify that for the rest of the committee, is that any decision taken on this that perhaps would increase the cost of the bus contract could be shared between the Amherst Public Schools and the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District. And so, I didn't want to limit Amherst School Committee members from not being able to talk from that hat as well as the regional hat as well. So, we talked to the two chairs of the committees, and we agreed that this could be a joint item because it could have an impact on the Amherst Elementary as well. It wouldn't have an impact on Pelham Leverett or Schutze Ferry Elementary, and that's why it wasn't needed to be a joint item for those committees. So, I'm not gonna literally read the whole memo, but it was in the pack, is in the packet. So, we had a request for qualifications that was sent out in December after a robust conversation here. There was a request from the Regional School Committee to be inclusive, bless you, in that RFQ to include a request for vendors to price out what it would cost to integrate electric buses into the contract. So, we did that based on that feedback we received. We did receive bidders for this contract. I think it's worth noting that a statewide issue, it's more acute in Western Massachusetts, but it's certainly true in Eastern Massachusetts as well, there's frankly not very many bus companies who bid on contracts. It was a couple months ago, there was pretty big articles talking about the statewide challenges with bus contracts, there are just not many vendors at this point, and the margins they're making, I guess, aren't satisfying the competition that you typically would like. We did open bids in January, and Five Star Transportation, from what we received, submitted the lowest bid for the standard contract. They were also the only vendor who included a supplemental option sustainability clause as requested. We didn't require that, we, it was an optional piece, and some of the other companies who expressed an interest did not have, they did not fill in that section, and they were not required to. So, what the contract would mean, it would be if, for two electric bus routes, and I want to just get the nomenclature right, so a run would be one loop, but a route would be both the morning and the afternoon for one set. So, if you think of two routes, that's four runs, right? One middle school, high school, one secondary run in the morning, one elementary run in the morning, one secondary run in the afternoon, one elementary run in the afternoon. And so, the cost they put in their bid was $225,000 annually, which would be a portion to the districts based on mileage as it typically is, in this case, between the Amherst-Pelham Regional Schools and the Amherst Public Schools. That's primarily because the buses, based on our best knowledge and professional advice, would stay within the town of Amherst, not extend just because of battery life to Schutze Ferry Leverett or particularly to Pelham. And this would be subject to go up based on the cost of living adjustment and the consumer price index like anything else in the contract. I think it's worth stating that the districts fully support increased sustainability. Talk about the high school, which was funded here with energy-efficient LED lights, we have a similar system right now, or similar grant that we received to support Crocker Farm with the same idea. And if the town chooses to move forward with this, the town or towns, we're very interested and excited about that prospect. Now, there's a financial elephant in the room, but I want to suggest, from our desire standpoint, we enjoy having an electric bus right now. One of the, some of the advantages of leasing as opposed to buying, and our particular arrangement with having our local fleet relatively small and then a larger fleet that is through contract, as you may remember from prior conversation, we struggle with field trips, athletic events with the number of buses that we own. And so, if Five Star, for instance, or a vendor was running that, we wouldn't have that conflict. So, you know, that was one of the barriers we talked about, and this came up in the past, that would no longer exist because we typically don't contract out our field trip runs and our athletic or extracurricular runs. It also wouldn't create additional expense of adding a rapid charging station to the middle school, which, not just the expense of adding the charging station, but also the capacity of the middle school electrical grid to support that station, which probably be additional costs as well, and would avoid a procurement process for us. That's the least important of the three, but it is time-consuming, and what we learned last time, even though we weren't paying for it, it complicated. So, I think it's worth noting that the Five Star has confirmed that the price of the supplemental option would only be valid if the school committee elects to include it in the beginning of the first year of the contract. I would strongly suspect that they've figured out the cost of purchasing two buses, and they're banking on the set number of years as they got a price point for us. The deadline would be April 7, 2020, that's based on 90 days from when the bids came in, so that's just standard contractual procurement piece. At this point, you know, for ourselves in the district, we view the decision of whether to fund this electric bus sustainability options as a topic for consideration by the regional towns and then the town of Amherst. So, you know, both you and they could perhaps provide feedback on whether they could support this as a supplemental budget item. Quite frankly, the dollar amount is not such where we feel like we can include it in the district's line item budget, and the impact on other items would be so significant that I, we don't feel like we could do it. That being said, we're very open to the conversation and open to the will of the towns if they want to participate in this.
Mr. Manina?
The cost estimates include the cost of dependability. Steve Sullivan and Sean Agano, over the last year, have had multiple conversations of the buses in the shop for repair. I don't know whether that problem's been solved or not.
So, that has been going better, but in this particular instance where it's Five Star taking on the responsibility, that is another advantage, that the district maintenance crew would not own any challenges that come with this, it would be on the vendor.
Yes, Ms. Spencer?
If you were to take these routes and ship them over to electric buses, does that have any impact on the cost of the rest of the budget? I mean, you're decreasing the routes that you're gonna do with traditional buses versus the electric bus, is that, is there any significant number there?
So, the 225 is on top of the normal contract?
And that's, so that's removing those routes from the standard buses?
Exactly, I should have been more clear about that, I apologize.
Okay, let me just check if anyone else has any questions at the moment or any comments. Yeah, Spencer?
I guess one of the, you know, having, just piggybacking on the public comment, that we had today, we had a nice conversation, and I think one of the things that I expressed then, and I think I'll express now, is I think it's also, I have a desire for this conversation to be part of a larger conversation that involves our towns, especially speaking as an Amherst School Committee member. I think, you know, we are often in silos, even though we share the goal across the town of reducing our greenhouse gases, and we have recently formed the, correct me, I'm gonna, the ECAC, which stands for the, you know?
Energy Climate Action.
Climate Action Committee. So, there's an Energy Climate Action Committee, and so, one of the things that I think we should be thinking about is how the schools, at least within Amherst, can participate and get a voice on that committee. I'm not sure what that should look like, but I do think it's important because I think one of the questions that, you know, when I read this, that I think about is, is the $225,000 that we're proposing to spend on these two electric bus routes, is that the best way of getting the most bang for our buck in terms of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions? And I think that's something that we need to understand better, both at, like, at the school level, but most importantly, I think, as a town, and that if we get more system-wide, it would actually be better.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think, I agree with everything Ms. Spitzer said, and I think adding to that, two members of the ECAC have reached out to me, well, three, but I guess it was two meetings, on different topics. Some of this has to do with, you know, a future elementary potential building project and other items, so it's been really helpful, and I think having more elected officials or connection from elected officials from this body or these bodies would be really helpful. I don't claim to be an expert in sustainability, and there's certainly the commitment, and I think one of the things, and I was clear about this in the good meetings we had this afternoon, is that different people have told me different things. You know, there are some folks who are dedicated to this particular cause, who feel like changing behavior is equally, if not more important, than changing some of the technology that if we could, for instance, one person said, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not endorsing this view, but just to show you the range of views that come to me, I'll know a school serious about climate change when their parking lot's half-full, right? Like, until you get to that place, right, if we're not changing the individual behavior, and there's ways to incentivize it, and that person went through that, other people feel really differently. And so, I think having the ECAC as a group that has lots of dedicated, skilled, trained, and we found out this afternoon, having a green consultant who's gonna work with them so that we get into the, what I heard from this person who's really dedicated, and actually, what's the best, gets the most bang for our buck, and what are creative ways, I think outside the box, to use language that I heard this afternoon on it, would be really helpful because I think in the phase where everyone's enthusiastic with a lot of ideas, that's wonderful, and it probably doesn't give me, I only speak for myself in my role, a lot of confidence that we're proposing the absolute best way forward of how to use funds around sustainability.
Mr. Demling then, Mr. Manina?
So, I'm really glad for the level of public advocacy on this issue that's happened recently, the petition and public comment and whatnot, because I think it does give us that opportunity that Ms. Spitzer and Superintendent Morris spoke about, which is, you know, up until now, we haven't had a conscious concerted effort to answer the fundamental question, what's the most effective way that we can reduce our carbon with whatever resources we can responsibly allocate to that end, right? I mean, I'm just gonna go on a short limb and guess that we all probably share that same principle, that in this day and age, every organization that has any oversight of public funds should be asking itself that question. And I don't know if we would have been to this point in the conversation if it wasn't for that level of public advocacy, so I think that's very positive. And I do think there are probably options that we're not tapping here because of business as usual, as public commenter spoke. You know, one idea I've thought about, and it's funny that you mentioned that half-full feedback here.
We've been getting lots of feedback.
Okay.
It's not a euphemism metaphor or analogy, it's just literally, there's some sort of electric issue we're getting.
So, one thing Dr. Morris mentioned is, you know, you'll know you're, take climate change seriously when your parking lot's a half-full. So, what if we banned high school students from driving to the high school? So, I don't want to go through all the details of that right now, but I'm just, I'm throwing this out there as something that could be worthy of discussion, because you think about how many trips that reduces over the course of the year, how much carbon reduction there is. Now, the obvious disadvantage to that is that it's inconvenience and sacrifice, but civilization's coming to that sort of point where we need to be talking about balances of sacrifice. Anyway, just to mention, that's one of many things, might not come up in a general town climate discussion, but something that we would be thinking about. And so, finding a way, even though there are so many subcommittees for drawing them, to engage on that, I think is really helpful. The other point that I always come back to here is that, you know, at the end of the day, we get these awesome presentations for investment in really worthwhile things, you know, we heard, you know, at least a couple of them tonight, and yet, at the end of the day, we have to be ruthless pragmatists, that we have a limited budget and it's a zero-sum game, and you have to rob Peter to pay Paul, and so, it would be better if that pie was bigger, right? And so, you know, the other thing that we struggle with is that the state, as we all know, doesn't fully fund our public schools. And so, when you look at that, and I always come back to, what are the things that are the most deflating that pie, and the most, the most, the things that are most constraining us, throttling us from being able to invest in these, in these things? And it's, one of the biggest ones is charter school funding. We would literally have millions more dollars every single operating budget, and we would be having a much different conversation about the level of investment in Restorative Justice and sustainability and in many other things if we had that money back. So, you know, it's funny to think of charter school funding reform as an environmental issue, but I absolutely look at that because I just hate being, having to say, no, we can't, no, we can't, no, we can't, because we have to be responsible to these other things that we're investing in schools. So, I'm very happy that the conversation's where it's at. I agree with the public commenter that this extra money doesn't make any sense for this particular contract, but I hope this spurs us towards future action.
You even have different school sites with charter schools, so you have more parents and more buses going to other pla, I mean, it's not actually a joke. joke. I mean, it's actually true. You have a more distributed school model, and it actually has more facilities that are being invested in with more things being built, you know, duplicate facilities to, you know, spec out classrooms. I mean, the entire thing, it's actually true. I have other things to say on this subject, not exactly that one, but others, that you, they touched on what Mr. Demling just said, but Mr. Manino, you had a thought?
I hate to be a ruthless pragmatist, but is this proposal asking this committee to authorize above the regular budget, $225,000 in perpetuity for electric buses?
Can I answer that, actually? Because it's actually, I mean, it's, it's relevant, because, Mr. Manino, if we put, go into our Peabody and Sherman Wayback machine, to use an incredibly antiquated reference to many months ago, you may recall that our committee actually demanded, nay directed, Sean Mangano and the superintendent to include in our RFQ a request to say, look, we actually really, we like the idea of doing electric bus leads. We think it's a really great idea. If we could do it, we actually don't have good data on it. We'd like to at least start by including it in our RFQ as an optional item, so that we can start getting feedback. Lord, Lord knows if it was affordable, we would do it. Here you go. So the point is, it's, this is something that we actually asked for, and it is at the disposal of the district to figure out what to do with it.
And I'm asking for a clarification of what we asked for. Is the price tag of what we asked for, $225,000 more per year?
I'm just saying, it's not a proposal, I mean, it's something we requested, though.
So, answer your questions, yes. And I think in terms of a process piece, I think the committee would need to think about whether this is an item on the four town meeting on Saturday, because if we're saying we have to talk about the towns, or if this is something that, and I'm trying to be very neutral in this conversation, or something that is a political nonstarter or financial, I don't mean political capital P, but just, you know, that, that the body doesn't want to bring to four towns about the cost, it was an exercise in understanding what the costs are, and it'll be continued engagement around sustainability in the future. I mean, I think, I think if, if the committee wants to take this seriously, you know, Saturday would, would be an opportunity to, to bring this up, or...
And I appreciate the new information.
Yeah.
I just sort of want to echo and build on to what things that I've heard from Ms. Spitzer and Mr. Demling about this, knowing that we asked for this, so we did, and it's helpful to have, to really have a data point for us to react to, and sort of hearing that it's over $200,000, I think is sort of, you know, gulp. And really, you know, it does beg the question that Ms. Spitzer raised, is, you know, were we to have $200,000 that we wanted to spend on sustainability initiatives? Is this where we would spend it? And I think what's, what's missing, and sort of building on, I think where you were headed, is, is a sustainability vision for, for the district that probably needs to be coordinated with the town as well, but understanding sort of where can we have the biggest impact from a sustainability and, and carbon, you know, reduction perspective, and what would that cost us? And can we, can we have greater impact with less money, or doing things, spending that money in a different way than for bus, you know, to, for bus routes, basically? So I, I think my perspective is to pass on this for now, but to, to keep, to sort of figure out a way that we can devise that sustainability vision for the district.
Yeah, and I don't think, I think, I'm going to build on that point, because I think I agree with all three of my colleagues, that, although, although, that sounds funny about this, but we keep using the singular of alternative way or alternative thing, and I don't think that's what you mean. It's really, I don't know, what things can we do? And how do we plan more effectively? And how do we plan for things that we can do in the short term immediately that have maybe lower cost, but more impact? Or even if they have some cost, we can see sort of double bottom line benefits to our operating budget versus the investment. And, and we also have the staff, and we know how to, like, we can see a glide path to implementing it quicker. And then there are other things that we might want to do, I mean, even just like the middle school roof that we have talked about reinforcing and putting solar panels on, or planning in some way to do alternative methods to basically green and do as close as we can to improving the building envelope and doing zero, zero energy or close to zero energy with the middle school and the high school. For the middle school roof, we're waiting, I know this isn't an item for tonight, but we're keep talking about getting money from the MSBA to match our funds to do the roof. We know that that project is going to be delayed likely until we're eventually successful in getting into that program. So that's something that we all, we've already talked about wanting to do. We think it's really important to do. There's probably things we could do to plan around it better, so that we could, we're better prepared when we get to that point, but we also know we have to wait for it, right? So it's not something we can do immediately. And so, I mean, what I would love, I don't think we can do this, A, I agree with the idea of not pushing this for town, which I think also Mr. Demling was suggesting we don't do. But I also think for, maybe, I don't, this isn't a topic for tonight, but what I'd like us to talk about is, like, officially formalizing at the Amherst School Committee level if that committee chooses to take it. Oh, wait, this is a Amherst School Committee meeting! I can say that! This is so cool! I was about to do that convoluted thing where we don't say what we're not supposed to say. I totally think the Amherst School Committee should take this up directly with the town as an item for the school committee to engage in with the ECAC, as Ms. Spitzer was saying. I also think the committee's together, and we, and we, there's a challenge on what we can do with Schutzbren and Leverett, so I'm just setting that aside at the elementary level. But I think our committee, we should try to develop, what do we call it, a climate change plan. And I think it should be beyond a vision. I think we should articulate a vision, and then underneath that, try to work out functional elements and plan elements for it. And I really think we should do that. And then, in, but then, as we're looking into this year, if there are things we can bite off this year and do, let's do them.
So on that topic of next step, something I shared in the meeting this afternoon, and I'll share here, and we had, we had a really thorough conversation about, you know, where does this sit with the committees versus the town? And it's, it's a complex issue. I don't have to tell anyone up on the, up here or in the audience that that's a complex issue. I think one of the things I suggested in the meeting is getting some professional expertise to help us with that. Not to dismiss or reject the local expertise, but having someone who's neutral, who's not an elected official, who can do work beyond what our staff's capacity is, as they're doing many, many other things, to think about, to itemize items, itemize a list of things for the future to create that plan as you described. And so, you know, one way to think about that, as I suggested, is, is there, we often have school, and, and this is contingent on another body accepting this proposal, that's not this one, so I want to be conscious of that, but, you know, having a school committee representative to ECAC, the same way there's a school committee representative to SETF, CPAC, LPAC, right, those other, other groups. Another one is to have a capital expenditure, capital request for more similar, I think, that more aligns exactly with what you shared, Mr. Nakajima, but I think what we can get done, being planful about that and having professional expertise to develop that plan, makes a lot of sense. So we get out of the, you know, 20,000 really good ideas, and there are 20,000 really good ideas. That's not a critique, it's the reality. And where we sit as a district is, how do we judge which ones are the most valuable? How do we judge which ones are the most feasible? And that's where, with all due respect to Mr. Roy Clark, he should be involved in that conversation, but I think we need some professional help that has expertise in that particular area to help guide the work. So that's not in our capital plan we'll talk about tonight, it's on the agenda, so we certainly could talk about it then, but I think, you know, for a committee that wants to take next steps, and I hear that consistently in all the feedback, I think it's trying to think about where, where does the, the school committee's connection to the town and link, and linking up there? What's the school committee's interest in, in having its own group focus on these things? I don't have any answer, but I just want to put out, these were the, kind of, and Ms. Spitzer can correct me, but those are some of the conversations we had the afternoon that I think was particularly fruitful and productive.
Please, you're going to?
No, I'd, I'd agree, and I also think, because you, you, I think it's important not just to connect this to the, for lack of a better term, like the built environment or the, the capital projects, because I, I do think that the behavior and the norms and stuff that we're setting in the schools, this is another one of those far out ideas, but like, for example, if we went to a vegan menu, like, that would be a way of reducing the, the greenhouse gases, but it would never come up in a meeting about capital budget items, because they, they don't talk. So I just, I just think it's, there are good reasons to bring in a consultant who, who isn't tied to one of, one specific area of the budget or one specific area of the operations of the school, because sometimes they could come up with ideas that might be things that we wouldn't think about in our own.
Can I offer, I just want to offer, I'll, well, two seconds. I'm worried that we're going to radically agenda item drift in ways that we're actually no longer talking about what we said we were talking about, and instead we're talking about something really, really good and really, really important, and it's tangibly related, but it's not actually directly related. And, and that's a, that's a problem under open meeting law. And can, can Dr. Morris, and maybe Ms. Spitzer if you want, or anyone else who wants, raise their hand? Could you maybe come up with information, like, and ideas, and we could have a future agenda item in the near future? I don't even mind if, if the chair is willing to do it jointly again between Amherst and region, and like, come back to us with something we can respond to, but then it'll be on the agenda, and we, I feel like we could feel more freely talk about it. Does that make sense?
It does, and, and I want to just comment that Ms. Spitzer warned me today about agenda drift, and I then contributed to it, so I apologize.
We've all been involved in this.
So I'm going to go back to the buses, just to say that if you're thinking along the lines, and, and I know we're thinking about other things, but if you're talking about assessments to the other towns, I think the example of the electric buses that are going to take over two routes in Amherst is not going to fly in the other towns, if you're going to try to assess a portion of $225,000. So when you're talking about all of these things, you really, we need to think about that part too, because we are partners.
That's a very true statement, I think. Mr. Demling?
So when that agenda item gets moving, if we could maybe make it a point to, so there've been a number of individual groups who have reached out to our two committees at various stages, who've offered a lot of helpful input and feedback. If we could just let them know what, when that meeting is. Sometimes our meetings happen and it's, you know, it's out there, it's out there, they're posted, legal, right? They're out there on the ether. It's always good to have a, a point like that.
That's very true. That's very true.
Yeah, you know, the other, the other thing I'm, I'm really excited about with, with this kind of, when we start to think about, I'm just trying to stay on topic.
And the cool thing, by the way, this is about agenda planning now in the future, so it's actually okay to say.
Okay. Is that, you know, when we talk about, you know, what, we, we want to be very cognizant that if we have limited resources, we want to get the most bang for our buck, the most carbon reduction, you know, part of it is spreadsheet analysis and calculating, you know, what, you know, parts per million and this fuel versus that fuel, but there is a qualitative aspect to this as well, right? I mean, part of the advocacy around electric buses is that they're visible, it's something that you experience, and that can have an effect on yourself and others, which then has a propagating effect towards action. And it's, it becomes a really interesting conversation among, among different types of advocates, you know? So if we were to engage in a consultant, for example, just continuing to talk on the agenda planning focus, I, I would expect more than just a, a table that lists numbers and says, okay, here's the 17 things ranked order to what, what's going to give you the most bang for it. It's really a conversation about, you know, like, Ms. Spitzer was talking about the behavior and how that has a positive effect on them.
I think the superintendent would probably welcome, as a single point of contact with no dialogue between members, feet, I feel like I'm being ultra careful tonight for some reason, even though this is like motherhood and apple pie, like, everyone thinks this is a great thing, at least in our communities, everyone thinks this is a great thing to work on. If you, if somebody comes up with an idea like that observation, shoot it to the superintendent so he can work it into the, the calculus. I think a lot of us would agree with what you just said, Mr. Demling, and I don't want those things to be lost when you're, when you, and also, it also does sound funny about this, but I'd hate it if you came back to us with a draft plan, and then we just spent another hour saying things we could have said to you already to improve the quality of the plan, analogous to what Ms. Spitzer said earlier about different kinds of forms of change or forms of planning that you can do. So let's move on. Are we good?
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Second.
All this in favor? We're adjourned.
Cool. All right. Region topics to be continued from item seven. FY21 budget presentation.
While Mr. Slaughter is bringing up slides...
We're only five minutes behind. Sorry, Mike, I said that, I said that out loud on mic, I apologize. We're five minutes behind, so...
We'll, we'll try to make up the five minutes. Do our best. So just the, the few things I want to note before Mr. Slaughter briefly goes through the budget proposal, which I'm sure everyone after last night's well attuned to, since you had that meeting. One is that this is slightly different than what was sent out on Friday, it's been updated on the website as well, and that's, one of the reasons is that we got not our final, final health insurance information, we got more clarity on health insurance costs going next year. We received that on Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday, I think it was.
Sunday. So we've updated the slides, so if you're looking at the packet that was sent to you on Friday and not the one that was resent today, you're going to notice some differences. So better to look at the one that's in front of you or on the screen than if you printed it out for some reason or looking at that email from Friday.
Is it on the website?
It is. Yeah, we updated it on the website as well, but it was emailed out, I want to say, two or three o'clock this afternoon, something like that.
It was. By the way, can I, could you do me a favor? And me, it's probably just me, but ever since I started wearing reading glasses, I've discovered that PDFs that have two slides per page are very challenging to read, and when I blow them up, they get really fuzzy and sometimes aren't as legible.
Yep.
Could you please stop doing that?
Sure.
And send, I mean, especially because, I mean, even, even if like, if the printed, I'm not trying to be bad to anyone out here in the audience, but if the printed copies you hand us have two slides per page to save on paper, that's an awesome thing to do, but since electronic documents don't have that limitation, dear God, please send the actual PowerPoint.
And the attempt was against, not to be, I'm not being flip at all, it was around saving paper, but we can do both.
I'm just, yeah, I really would have, because like, today I was, you know, never mind, I'll stop now, but it was just annoying.
Sorry to hear that, and we can, we'll take care of that. So I think the second thing I want to say is that this is the initial budget proposal. The specific budget proposal with adds and cuts will be on February 11th agenda, and that'll have a budget hearing as well. That's where you'll receive in advance of that meeting, the full budget, you know, book, like what we looked at last night, that 202-page or so electronic document. And so tonight is what we have now. The other thing that got better since the four town meeting and the overall budget picture, if you remember the four town meeting in December, there were a couple of variables we said that could either make this budget better or worse. Two of the primary ones were charter school enrollment and health insurance information, and those were, those were both unknowns. So on a charter school enrollment front, we, we received a report in the spring the year prior about the expected enrollment, which was, I think, 111, 110, something like that. And then in December, we get the current year's enrollment, which was 88. So there was significant savings based on less than expected charter school enrollment. And then the other piece for health insurance is we budgeted at 6%. And right now, we don't have a final number, but based on the information we've received from MIA, that's, it's not Amherst specific, it's their general pool information, we've now adjusted that down to 4%. And so some of the numbers that got better for the member towns are primarily because of those two factors. So if you think all the way back in December, Mr. Mangano presented numbers, the numbers for the town assessments right now look a little bit better, and that's primarily a function of those two factors, charters, less than expected charter school enrollment and health insurance that we now anticipate to come in less than what we projected. So again, tonight, we'll go through very, you know, briefly, you see, it's not a long presentation, even we get to adds and cuts, adds and reductions and adjustments, it'll be at that broad level. Two weeks from now, we come back, that'll be much more detailed and specific. Two weeks from now, we'll also have the feedback from the four town meeting, which will be helpful in that regard. So sorry for that long introduction, I just wanted to frame the conversation.
Manino?
At a future meeting, could you go into why the charter school enrollment was over that anticipated? Not now.
I can do it very briefly. So DESI projects in the spring what they anticipate charter school enrollment will be. I don't have a great sense of exactly the calculus of that. In December, they send us actual enrollment information that they've received from charter schools for the current fiscal year, and the delta between what they projected in June and what we received in December was, again, the difference, it was about 111, 110, something like that?
Maybe 112.
110, um, and then the, the actual was 88.
Right.
So, I mean, there's, there's no more magic to the story. The DESI spits out numbers, they send it to us and, and they were a lot better. I think we could talk, have a broader conversation perhaps in the future about, you know, why perhaps the charter school numbers are staying stagnant or perhaps even decreasing when we anticipated they'd go the other, other way. I think that'd be a useful conversation now, but probably for this conversation, we're going to stick more to the budget if that's okay with the committee.
I have a slide that hints at that too, right at the back.
That's right.
The other thing, uh, just a quick follow-up on, on the charter school, they do one more adjustment in the spring. So as we go through the year, there's one more final adjustment. There are some, some circumstances that are unusual. Um, this happens with school choice as well, if there are households that are, uh, split custody. Uh, and kids truly live equally in, in different households in different towns. Uh, those kind of things get apportioned out, but that happens really late in the process. And that's, that's a really small amount of change. So the primary change is, is the one that, uh, occurs in December when we get updated numbers. So I'll just take you through a few things here, one of which is that I tried to, although I was not successful in making all the corrections to the dates. Uh, I had originally sent this out and said January 27th, because I was blending both yesterday's meeting and today's meeting. And I think I got fiscal 21 in all the places where I said fiscal 20. You can tell, this is a nice looking template, so I was leaning on that and, and so hopefully I got that changed. Still, I'm going to change the Pelham logo to the new one with the, with the pine cones, but nonetheless, we'll, we'll take our, uh.
Hemlock cones.
Hemlock cones.
Oh, they're hemlock cones.
Pelham has a new, uh, a new little emblem?
Yeah. It's, if you've driven by and seen their new sign out front, which is a beautiful sign, it has the new, uh, logo on it. And, and I've used it in some places, but evidently not gotten to this one yet. So, we'll skip to budget highlights to start with. Uh, the fiscal 21 budget does a lot of what we do, uh, now, and we're trying to preserve those things. And so, uh, fortunately, we're, we're able to do that in a, in a pretty good way. You'll see the second little point, a net reduction of $338,000 is proposed, uh, to fit within the capacity, you know, taking the feedback we got in December from the communities. And, and knowing what, uh, information we have, the governor's budget came out, um, just the other day. That actually gave us some, some slightly positive news around, uh, chapter 78, it's a little higher than what we had been looking at a week or so ago. And what that, what that 338,000 does lets us fit within the, you know, generally within the sort of guidance from the communities about what they can, can do relative to their assessment. Um, the budget currently sits at about $32,718,18, which is 1.7% higher than last year. Which is really rather, rather modest in a lot of ways, but it, but it does allow us to sort of carry, carry forward. We'll switch to the next slide. This is, this is, uh, just a change in, not the, not the actual dollar amounts, but the changes in each of these different areas. I'm going to point something out to you and I want you to think about it as we get to the, the back end of the, the conversations. One is the special education, uh, tuitions and tran- transportation is significantly lower. As students change, our requirements around those types of things change and sometimes rather profoundly. You know, I'll review that area with, with our, uh, student services folks and, and see if that still holds true. And, and make sure that as we get to our February 11th meeting, we have as, as good a picture of that as we ha- we can have and, and be as predictive as we can be. Um, the other one I'll have you note is the health insurance. And so health insurance by itself is that orange, uh, box. And so if you think about all the expenses, uh, you know, that are there, that's one of the primary drivers, um, of, 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 of increase or inflation in our. And that's with, that's with our 4% estimate. So just wanted you to keep that in mind as we go through the rest and get into the actual numbers there a little bit. Quickly on the budget timeline, again, we didn't correct this, uh, unless you are thinking of this meeting kind of like a continuation of last night's meeting. So this presentation was, is actually today and it's not yesterday. But we'll have a four town meeting this Saturday. Um, we'll have the budget hearing on the 11th and then we'll vote the budget, uh, well, you will vote the budget. Most likely March 10th. Uh, it'll depend on, to some extent, town meetings and, and deadlines we have relative to that. In going to the next slide, we talk about the budget process. Uh, we, we touched on this in the Amherst meeting and, and the Pelham meeting when I was up there. But just in general, you know, the, the principals, central office directors, et cetera, start in October, November and start thinking about, you know, what are the expectations? What is the shape and form of, of the coming budget? You know, what are going to be, uh, things that drive our price, you know, our costs up? And, and what are our, our expectations for the coming year? And then as we get into November, December, January, start getting to, to this phase that we're in now, uh, where we're starting to get sense of what the revenue picture starts to look like. And then, then we get into the actual nuts and bolts of, of, uh, presentations and, and hearings to, to make, you know, the, the true adjustments to the, to the, uh, to the budget for, for vote in March.
And if I could add to that, I want to go back to Mr. Demling's question, because I think it's probably best answered, uh, on this slide, um, from earlier this evening about where is this? You know, there was a presentation, multiple, I think, topics that had price tags earlier in the evening. And so what we're presenting tonight is based on kind of this process. So there's, uh, to be very clear, there's plenty of things that, um, principals, directors, Mr. Roy Clark included, uh, suggested to be included in the budget that we have not. Because we try to stay within the guidance of the towns. And so I think an active conversation towards the end of this, uh, particularly as we have four town meeting on Saturday is kind of where is the committee? I mean, I think, you know, frankly, at the last four town meeting, I think you expressed an opinion, uh, not on that particular issue, but on the, the broader issue of, you know, what's the direction the committee wants to have within staying within those guidelines, not staying within those guidelines. And, and so, uh, I want to be really clear that there are plenty of wonderful ideas, I think, would be fantastic and, and needed for kids that are not included in, when we get to the adds, reductions, cuts. And that's not to say that, um, the suggestions tonight, uh, both of them that came up financially aren't excellent ideas that should be considered. But, uh, I think, I want to be really clear that if, um, the principals were in the audience right now and they'd look at this, they could, uh, enumerate multiple things that they think would be incredibly helpful for their students to be as successful as they can be. But we have those budget limitations that we have. So hopefully that answers your question earlier. I just thought it was more appropriate to answer, because I knew this was going to come up this evening.
So.
Okay.
Next slide. So speaking in front, uh, Saturday's conversation and, and the conversation that you had in, in, uh, December relative to, uh, the ability of communities to pay. This, this slide on the revenue budget and, and the following slide, which we'll get to, and, and it's not nearly as interesting as this one. Uh, this proposes a, a number of different options for how we do our assessment. So there's a statutory method in state law, there's the assessment method, um, spelled out in our regional agreement. And so those two sit in the, uh, right two columns. The statutory is 100% statutory and the 100% to five-year enroll is five-year rolling average, which was what we used for a number of years and was, is actually written into our, our regional agreement. Um, and so, you know, over a number of years, we've had continuing conversations about how we really ought to assess, what, what's the right way to go, uh, that sort of thing. So we've, we've laid out here and the conversations have been such that, you know, we use a progressive method to move toward a, uh, an average, uh, of the, uh, five years, most recent average, uh, based on the statutory model. But not the straight statutory method, which uses, uh, a current year, um, EQV or, or property tax value, uh, method. And, and, uh, the difficulty with that, and actually I was having a conversation with Mr. Mangano just the other day, and he said, yeah, the, the problem with the statutory method, you know, is that it, it is a single year. So for small communities, like three of the four towns in, in our region, uh, you tend to get very high peaks and valleys. And so, you know, and some of what we experienced when we were self-insured and we had peaks and valleys, depending on what happened with regard to healthcare, same thing happens with, with a single year, um, assessment method. And so the idea of using a five-year average, uh, helps to sort of moderate that, those sort of peaks and valleys and make it a little more predictable for folks. And so what you see there is the 40% and 50%, which were discussed at, at the meeting in December, and then we put together a 45%, which is a way of apportioning, uh, the, the statutory method in, in a, a little more modest or moderate way. And so I'll take you down the, down the order of this. And basically, the operating budget is first, we take out, you know, our reduction of 338. We get what we think the budget will be, which is $32,718,18. Our chapter 78, $9,600,000. And then, you know, we add up the other sources of income. As we get more information, we will refine those numbers. So transportation reimbursement is likely to change, hopefully in a positive direction, but we'll get refined with that over time. Things like Medicaid reimbursement, charter reimbursement, et cetera, uh, are probably going to stay about the same. E and D's support for the budget will, uh, when, when, one of the other things you'll see in November, uh, not in November. February 11th is, uh, is the second quarter, um, uh, progress on the budget. And that will help shape our understanding of where we are relative to, uh, the current year, which will then help inform our understanding of what our E and D will look like and how much money might be available from E and D to be used in a, in a subsequent year. Right now, we're predicting a $515,000 use of, of E and D monies, uh, to support the budget. And so then the contingency, the E and D contingency, we plan that every single year. It's sort of, we're not really going to touch that unless we really have to. But it does carry a, a component of support for the, for the budget. And so what happens when you get that total revenue and you subtract it from what you think your budget is, is you have what's going to get assessed to the towns. And so that remaining, uh, bottom section of, of this chart goes through what that looks like for each community, using the different methodologies. And then the percentage next to it is their percentage change relative to, uh, the fiscal 20 budget. And so you'll see that, you know, for Amherst, for example, uh, at 40%, it's about a 2.5% increase. Uh, it's 2.55 at 45, it goes up to 2.6, uh, at 50%. And as you go through, you know, the, the differences vary a little bit as, as you go along. And so, uh, it, it progresses a little differently, uh, depending on, on what our basis is for, for that assessment. So I believe the guidance, if, if, and you can talk about that, what the guidance was from, from December and sort of what we're trying to sort of nuance here a little bit.
Yeah. So, uh, I think I'll, the first thing I'll say is the rest of this presentation faces, uh, the financials on the 45% method. And that's some feedback we're looking for, from the committee tonight, whether that seems the appropriate one or not. And for Mr. Slaughter, uh, gets on and I looked at the 50 and the 40 and said, let's, let's try for 45. But I think there was some merits to looking at that. What we heard at the four town meeting from Schutzbury is they were looking at, uh, hoping to, or requesting to be at, um, a negative point 3.0. Doesn't get quite there at 45, but negative 2.75 is, is pretty close. We also heard from the town of Leverett at that four town meeting that, uh, this was going to be incredibly difficult. They knew last year was going to be incredibly difficult when there was kind of a tentative two-year thought, uh, about assessment methodologies. That they were going to have to make cuts in other departments to do that. And so if we think of where they were last year making that commitment, it's a bit under. So they were at like 3.3 or so last year when we looked at that chart. It was, it was hypothetical, because we didn't have all the data yet. But, uh, this brings them in a little under, which I think is, is consistent. Uh, I'll skip over Pelham, um, because they did not offer much guidance at that meeting. Uh, the town of Amherst, uh, suggested they had a pretty significant shortfall in their funding and they requested 2.5. This is 2.55, so it is, um, it is a bit higher than that. And, um, while not sounding so much as a percentage in raw dollars, because Amherst is 81% of the budget, it's, it's not an insignificant difference between 2.5 and 2.55. But I guess the, the attitude that, that we'd like to bring at least to this meeting is this feels like the best compromise where we're pretty close to what was requested from each of the member towns. We're not going to get exactly where each member town suggested, and we don't really think that's particularly possible. For instance, if you look at the 50% method, while it satisfies, more than satisfied Schutzbury's request, uh, both Amherst and Leverett get pushed up, you know, significantly enough higher either as a percent or as raw dollars, um, to where I feel like they might feel uncomfortable with those numbers. You know, and we talked, Dr. Slaughter and I talked today about, you know, uh, not trying to game this. I mean, we could probably find the 47.6% statutory method where Schutzbury ends up at negative three and maybe we'll land there. But we're hoping that the spirit of compromise and the spirit of working together and collaboration, uh, helps promote, you know, what might be a sensible move from 40 to 45, which Schutzbury has requested that it's more than 40% statutory. But it's, it's based in, in a positive spirit of collaboration. So that's sort of where we're landing. The, to be clear, the assessment method right now, all three of those land up with the same number of adds, cuts, reductions and adjustments. But I, I would express concern if we're not able on Saturday to get to a place of agreement, uh, then sort of the, the, the connection of assessment method and budget start getting mixed together. And so we're hoping that the 45% method, you know, and again, we're open to feedback from the committee, uh, lands us in a place where the four towns can agree on that.
Can you, maybe we've talked about this before, so forgive me if we have.
Yeah.
Can you remind me where the 338, what's the magic around 338?
Sure, so.
In terms of reductions, I was saying, I understand.
If we're, if you're okay flipping ahead to the additions and reductions, um, section, I was hoping this would work, but it doesn't.
That would be too convenient.
I think that, that actually tells the story of the 338.
Right.
More explicitly. So, um, for the budget adjustments, you may remember that we included a contribution to capital stabilization in our positive budget year last year. We made an assumption that this would come off, and so it's coming off. So that, that's funds that we're going to eventual, uh, to work on the track or the, um, the fields project to support the towns' assessments for that. We're able this year, because of some positive variances, to prepay retirement incentives. So that's something that we, we would typically budget in the following year. So these are folks who retire that, based on their contract, receive an incentive. And so we feel confident we'll be able to pay those funds out of this current year's budget. Staff turnover is just, again, folks we know are retiring and, you know, our assumption of who we hire to replace them typically has some cost savings to it. We had no sabbatical requests this year, so we build in a sabbatical request each year into the budget. Whether it's accepted or not is obviously a school committee discretion, but this year we did not have a request. For regular instruction, there's an alternative funding source that I'll get much more detailed about two weeks from now, uh, in describing that. It's a relatively small amount at the regional level. For budget additions, um, again, there was no shortage of requests, to be really clear. But the only one we felt like we, uh, were able to include at the high school level is a credit recovery course, uh, for students who need support to surpass the MCAS. And also credit recovery for a course, the, to receive the number of course requirements you need to graduate our high school and be eligible for admission into a higher education. We're seeing that, uh, we, we have sort of this gap in our course sequence in mathematics. That's not about whether, what curriculum you use. I want to be really clear, that's a very different conversation. But just about what students need, that we need a, a course that doesn't follow the traditional, uh, sequence of courses. That's for a subset of students that we feel from an equity basis, we're not meeting their needs in mathematics. So the point two addition would add a section in both the fall and the spring to provide additional support for a subset of students that our data tells us we need to. And this is very consistent with the math report last year, that there were students who, um, aren't getting exactly what they need and they need additional boosting. And we don't, and within our core sequence, we don't really have the structure now. And there's a request from Principal Jones that I was, um, felt like I, I need to support for the benefit of students.
Sreena, your question?
To follow up on Mr. Nagashima's question about the 338. And you may have detailed your discussion of priorities as much as you can. Why wasn't it 500,000?
We'll get there. Yeah, I just want to go down this list and then, then come back to the 338s at the bottom, and then I think I'll be able to, to summarize that. Uh, for budget reductions, um, this is an unfortunate, well, all of the reductions are unfortunate. But, but, um, as you know, last year, we added a position, and, and we knew it was temporary, but it's been incredibly valuable for the implementation of a new curriculum in grade seven through 12. Now, it's not an Amherst meeting, so I can't say six, so seven through 12, um, and, um.
I think you can say it, we just can't talk about it.
Oh, yeah, I have that leeway. That's true. And, uh, I personally, professionally, I should say, would, and I think collectively, we'd love to continue that position for one more year. To have a two-year rollout, implementation of curriculum typically, um, the first year, um, it's great to have support and the second year to fade it a bit. And then, and then perhaps, um, that can go. But we're not in a place where we'll be able to maintain that except for, um, a sub-portion that we can come out of Title II A from grant funding, because it's around coaching. But it would be reduced from a point eight position, um, which you see the cut here, and the point two will retain from a grant fund. So, uh, there would be a loss of support for teachers who are implementing the math curriculum. We'll figure out ways to do that with our curriculum leaders and, and other folks, but it i- it is a loss. The second one at the high school, which Mr. Demling referenced earlier, again, we'll get more specific about this, uh, in two weeks. But it's, it's really looking at, um, class size and where are places that if we had to reduce and we're sort of feeling like we're in that place right now, we could reduce. And, and some of that's para educator staff and some of that's professional staff, um, looking at, are there sections that we're offering that could be collapsed into fewer sections and still have, uh, be educating our students effectively at the high school? Finally, there's a $30,000 cut to administration. Again, that'll get much more clear two weeks from now. But that's not folks who work, um, instructing students on, on a moment, moment basis. So we get to a net reductions of $338,000, so I want, I do want to come back to that question. And we were trying to, again, there's a connection to the, the page we were on when this question arose. We were trying to come up with an adds, cuts, reductions, um, adjustments list that landed us a place that was a budget that we thought our towns could support, based on their direct feedback. So if the advice we received from the member towns was that, um, was different than what we received, that number would be different. But we were working within the confines of what we heard at the four town meeting and what we continue to hear from elected officials in Amherst, Leverett, Pelham and Schutzbury. So I think that's where we get into the conversation of, is that the right amount? And, and that's the feedback we look for the committee about. But we were trying to stay realistic and feasible based on the feedback we received.
So to be, to clarify and to be clear, you, if you, if you wanted to do an actual level services budget, in which case there are some reductions, but there's actually literally no change in, because what you're doing, you would have, you'd go with a $196,000 cut. And you're voluntary, I mean, if I wanted to better way of phrasing it, you're. you're creatively and voluntarily putting forward an additional hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in cuts? If I have the hundred thirty-five?
A hundred fifty-five in cuts and thirteen thousand.
With, because you think you need to in order to be able to put forward a budget that may be saleable, so to speak.
That is correct.
Okay. Is this, please.
I just have a clarifying question. So when I look at the column for full-time equivalents, the total reduction is point eight five. But if I add up those numbers, it's two, negative two point two five. So I'm just trying to understand if, is that reflect like?
I didn't fix the sum.
Oh, okay.
Of the reduction section to capture the one point four.
So we actually are losing.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's negative two point two. So it's negative one point seven five, if I'm doing the math quickly in my head.
It will be corrected for the four town meeting.
Yes, it will.
But I just think it's important, we make sure.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, it's two point two five.
General comments okay at this point?
Yeah.
So one thing, you mentioned there are a number of things that you think we should invest in, but are not on this list because of the budgetary constraint. I would lead with that, or at least make it a prominent part of the presentation to the towns. I think we need to be very clear about, this is where educationally, you know, after consultation with the building heads and department heads and whatnot, teachers, this is what we should be doing and what we can't, and that we're not investing in, as opposed to starting out with a number and then, so I think that's important. And specifically to that, the six to twelve math curriculum, training and support reduction, I understand why it's on here. And, you know, that's a really uncomfortable thing for me to look at. Particularly given how many years and how many meeting discussions we've had about our math curriculum over time, and how many different aspects of that. I mean, I'm sure we all not understand at this point how complex of a thing that is, going from three buildings and the issues with special needs and the issues with the achievement gap and the issues with different learning styles and the entry and then the failure of IMP at the high school. You know, to hear you say you would love to continue that, and that really ought to be there and have that cut, that really makes me want us to take a second look at, one, either just adding it back into the base level budget proposal and let the town assessments be where they may. Or I'm curious as to what the percentage of ED results in. So what do we project that ED percent to be? If it's still at a very healthy level, you know, and I'm the first person to say you can't think of free cash as free cash. But this does give me pause, that if this is something that, you know, it's only a second year, we wouldn't have a third or a fourth year. Like you said, we would fade it. But, you know, at least from my point of view, from a school committee perspective, that looks like something that we ought to think about.
We had, I think I'd love for you to elaborate further on that, because I had the same sort of impression, it had the same impact on me, that I'm like, we had a lot of conversations on this topic. And again, sort of channeling a former member of the committee, who kept banging her gavel around saying we need to do more to close the achievement gap in grades seven through nine at the middle school, or seven through eight in the middle, seven through eight. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
At the middle school, yeah.
Anyways, that you look at something like this and you say, if we're pulling back the resources, are we either A, going to have a problem in the fluidity with which we're able to implement what we're currently doing? Or B, we're going to have challenges meeting that task of saying, I mean, all the disconversations we had, in particular on the middle school. I mean, it's kind of a funny thing. Folks who came and complained to us, were largely from the high school, and were very articulate about what they thought was wrong. The data and the analysis kept saying, boy, we're really not doing as good a job as we need to at the middle school level. And anyways, I'll stop. I'm just, because alls I'm doing is repeating what Mr. Demling said. But I'd love, I mean, I'm comfortable throwing that back into the budget if we need to.
So let me just do a general process, because, I mean, you raised E and D and that piece. So I think at like three o'clock today, we got a report with our current E and D numbers. You know, because they get certified later than the end of the fiscal year. And the health insurance information, I know Mr. Bauchman, because he's the administrator of the trust or whatever the title is, I'm probably messing it up, was trying to get information today with a more finite number on health insurance, and then regional transportation. So all those things are still in play, right? My one piece I will promise not to vent for the rest of the night is, but you've heard me say this before, that doing our budget process at this time of year when there's so many variables, only, it's an exercise in frustration that, you know, is problematic organizationally. I'll now move on, but I just want to, this is highlighting the piece that if we're having this conversation, when we have it two weeks ago, unfortunately, you know, the timing is what it is, we'll have more finite information. We have more finite information than we had seventy-two hours ago. And so the useful part of the feedback, and I agree with what both of you have shared, and I know Mr. Sheehan, bless you, who's here, and many of our staff members would be incredibly appreciative and agree with what you've shared, is that we may have the capacity to take that feedback into account as some of those other numbers become more real.
Can I also just reinforce something that, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do that are incredibly important. A lot of things that we do that are incredibly important, deeply meaningful. It's hard to exaggerate how having a functioning and well-implemented and supportive and adaptive math program has to be like near the top of the list, right? And so, and as I said, I want to tie it back to what I said earlier. It is not actually separate from, it is in fact integrated to a social justice message. We talked, I mean, again, we talked about the fact that one of our next steps was closing the achievement gap at the middle school level, as well as also thinking about, we talked about this, advanced placement and other sort of special courses that also enable kids to achieve and get support at the high school level. So in other words, it's not even, it's not even like this is really important and it's somehow distinct from a social. It's actually completely integrated, the whole thing is integrated. And so to me, if this is, if we're not doing this as well as we possibly think we need to, then what on earth are we? And again, I'm sorry, I'm soapboxing it, but it's just because, I mean, we've sat through a lot of meetings and gotten a lot of correspondence of people who are profoundly passionate on this topic, and then listened to a lot of educators from our district who are equally passionate about what they're trying to do. Sorry, Mr. Manion.
No, I'll follow up. Did you say you can't tell us the ending balance at E and D right now?
So we got it a couple hours ago. I think it's very close to four percent. And if I'm wrong, I'll blame my head cold and stuff like that. But I'm pretty sure that that's accurate. I did quick math this afternoon.
All right, so you need feedback on, I mean, at this point, I mean, this wasn't a bad time to pause.
No.
Because you were looking for feedback on regional assessment. You were looking for, I mean, we actually now have gone through the adds and cuts, that's kind of cool, right? Made some progress there. You're looking for feedback there.
The other slides aren't very interesting, so we can skip those, you can read them at home, we haven't already.
No, they're all rocking. We love all of the slides. I'm actually trying to be funny, not be funny about this, but I mean, what feedback or guidance do you need next from our committee? Because that should guide what we do next.
Yeah, I think, so I think I hear the math loud and clear, and there's a lot of nodding heads even for people who didn't speak. So, I mean, even if you didn't speak, I think that was consensus, and I agree with everything that was stated. I do want to just say that when we were thinking about that cut, we were trying to keep reductions as far away from the direct student experience as we could, and we can go too far. And I think there's lots of examples where we have gone too far in that regard. So I think that's important. I think the feedback I heard from multiple presentations tonight also have dollar tags attached to them. And so I think we have a lot to consider. But I think the primary piece for, and hopefully you'll agree with me, is about, you know, that at this point, we're proposing the forty-five percent methodology. We'll get feedback from the towns. We're going to present that same, we would plan to present that same slide that was in tonight's presentation on Saturday morning, and see if we can get feedback and consensus, I can scroll back to it, I'm sorry, the clicker's not working, from the towns. Because once that's set, we can work through E and D and some other pieces. If we still have uncertainty about the support from the member towns for the assessments, then we're having a different conversation. And so I think for Saturday, that's my primary focus. Again, assessment method and assessment amount, right, there's a connection, but I guess the feedback I'm looking for is, you know, does the committee sort of think that's a good idea? Should we present this as just, here are options we came up with? You know, what role would you like the staff to play, yourself to play, in sort of promoting or not promoting any of the options presented? Because that's primarily, well, my experience of four town meetings is, there's an interest in the slide. There's more interest in the slide with the colors and the different town assessments. So I think for that particular audience, it'd be helpful to have the committee's thoughts on that, and I'll scroll back to it so you can see what I'm talking about.
So I guess the question, I mean, the superintendent is proposing to go forward with the forty-five percent assessment. I think we've talked about it quite a bit. If folks are comfortable with that, you can either say so or nod your head. If you have any other additional advice, raise your hand now, because others are going to move on. Mr. Manion.
A couple of things, if I may.
Yeah.
I think you could select any one of those columns. Leverett probably is going to have a problem one way or another. It's going to be a tough year for us. The column that you've chosen, the forty-five percent, probably the best you can do in a broad sense and complete sense. So I'm not sure what kind of response you're going to get from the town elders on Saturday. But it's probably just the best you can do. It's going to put a really tight squeeze on the town's budget for elementary school, police, fire, et cetera. The second point I wanted to make was that I always find this the most difficult part of the year for the reason that you try to understand, look at numbers and understand what's going on in the classroom, trying to understand what's happening between teachers and kids. And I'm not sure that the math program, the current curriculum is necessarily not working. We don't know what, why kids are, need recovery. At least, I don't know, maybe you know what's going on. I'm not sure that it's the curriculum. It may just be certain cohort of youngsters are having a hard time at this particular point in time. Third and final point I'll make is what, I don't know if it should be said on Saturday, but what deeply concerns me is our growing inability to act on our values. We heard two presentations tonight that really focus on the community's values and how the school reflects those community values. I understand the complexity of looking at energy and solar and electric buses and all that. But the fact that we can't move on that in a timely manner, and may have to postpone it way out there, is deeply troubling, because I think there's a consensus in the community that that's something we must do. Not that we need to do, but we must do. And as far as the issue of underperforming students and restorative justice, I think that also reflects our values as a community and as a school, district. An inability to at least consider the seriousness of funding that, I find a little troubling, because we can't, we can't do everything, I know that, but it seems like we're being able to do less and less in terms of what our community values are.
Just two very brief comments. So on the math front, I would not suggest that the inclusion of, or the add request that was in, is currently in the budget document, is based on a curriculum piece. Very well may be the case that this course would have been needed many years ago, that there was always a subset of students who, for a whole variety of reasons that, you know, some may be curriculum, some may not be, that need an additional boost and additional support if we're going to promote them to be college career-ready. And some of that's passing an MCAS, and it's not just a course to pass the MCAS, but we don't have in our core sequence something that sort of fits that ground, that's not around special education, ELL, regular education. Those are sort of clumps of, clutches of students that are identified, that we identify for the state. And regardless of that, there's a group of students that need additional support, and what does that look like? And for some students, that may be a different course sequence, and we have not adjusted to that. So I would say it's curriculum neutral. It's really just understanding that there are a group of students whose needs we need to meet in a different way. On the latter front, I just want to, I don't disagree with the larger point. I want to offer a perhaps different perspective, that three years ago, we didn't have restorative practice staff members in our schools. At this point, we have a full-time staff member at the high school, a full-time staff member at the middle school. By no means am I discrediting the programmatic recommendations that were stated tonight. But I do want to note that the towns have been very supportive of our budgets, yes, they're tight. And if you look back four years ago, you might say, oh, yeah, someone went to a workshop around restorative practice. We didn't have kind of teacher leaders or practitioners in our schools. And the fact that we have practitioners at both the middle school and high school right now, I think is a testament to the committee and then the community's support for that, even in tight fiscal years. So I just want to provide some context that your larger point is spot on, but I don't want to lose sight that the committee has been highly supportive, both fiscally and otherwise, of that in the past.
I think that's true, and that's true even in years where we've had to make significant cuts. We've maintained a commitment to maintaining investments in restorative justice. I think one of the things, I guess, I mean, I didn't feel like it was necessarily appropriate earlier to talk about budget and stuff like that. The reason why I made the suggestion that you, that you and staff colleagues meet with some of the folks who have been active in putting together the suggestions of restorative justice, as well as staff involved in restorative justice, is not because, I mean, two or three years ago, whenever it was, the reason I said that folks ought to sit down and meet was because there hadn't even been a meeting of minds to see whether there was, that if the proposal was accepted, that there was a well-ready home and welcome home in the high school for it. And that, you know, and it's sort of like, this is like ridiculous, right? Like, people need to sit down and talk and see whether this program is either fits or is orthogonal to the educational philosophy of the high school. And if it does fit, then let's talk about how we could do it, right? So that was the conversation then. Now the conversation is, we're actually doing it. And a lot of other presentations we've seen, and I know it's a different committee, so I'm not, alls I'll say is, I'll say it very generically, we've seen multiple presentations in which staff members who are not directly involved in the RJ program as RJ staff people are talking about how they're incorporating RJ practices and philosophy into the work they're doing holistically within their departments. So what it suggests to me is, it suggests that there's already a dispersion and an inclusion of this model on a more systemic basis than is probably generally understood, because it sits in different offices and different boxes. And so if, because some funds end up being fungible for the year, particularly on a grant level, I'm not saying that you might not be able to sit down and find a way creatively to find different pots of money that could be allocated to some portion of the memo that was put forward in a way that would feel useful and real to members of the community, as well as also make a difference in kids' lives. What I was also suggesting, though, is that because there hasn't been a refresh on what's happening overall, then, and also frankly, like what the family center is doing and the ways in which the family center, some of the items that were listed in the memo are things that we know the family center actually have staff people that do these things on a regular basis. And so part of what I was thinking was, if there was a more synthetic and sort of authentic dialogue around what people view as being the best opportunity for next steps and what resources we currently have, there might be a way of achieving some of the goals in the memo without actually having budget adds. But if the dialogue doesn't occur, you can't even find that out.
That's exactly right.
So I guess I could have said probably that earlier. But anyways, I'm sorry.
So one other thing I would just like to add, and this is, you know, it's a little bit of a blame game situation, but I think if, and this will, I believe we have a slide in the larger budget book where it talks about percentage of the budget funded by state aid in, you know, ten years ago versus now. And I think that's a real legitimate constraint on us and what we want to do and what we're able to do, because we're carrying more of the burden than we've carried in the past. And that's not, we can't fix that right now. But as, you know, you know, I mean, obviously, if you talk to our representatives in the State House, they're cooperative and, you know, in agreement with us on that, but the rest of the state is not. It's kind of a nonstarter. But it is nonetheless, the reality in which we live, is that, you know, we're under fiscal constraint because, and this is not just in education, it's many areas of, you know, look at the town budget, it's the same thing that's happening there, is that the support of those budgets by virtue of state aid, which is supposed to be an equalizer and a leveler of resources across the state, you know, isn't there the way it used to be? And so it puts a greater constraint locally, and that makes us make very difficult choices about how we spend the money and what we spend it on. it on.
Okay.
We, uh... As far as Avery, so you asked about committee support for, for this stuff on Sunday. I, I think forty-five is the, is the, is the compromise, and, you know, just if, I wouldn't be shocked if it has to move to the left even, but, you know, whatever, what I think, whatever gets us there. And I, I share the comments that have just been made, especially Mr. Fanch about the deep frustration that the state does not support our public schools or other services to the degree that they, they ought to, and lets things like charter funding savage our budget so that we have to say no to things we value.
So absent anyone else raising their hand, I think the guidance to the superintendent is gonna be to go with forty-five, but expect potentially one heck of a conversation? We don't know. We'll find out. All right, what else do you need? Because the time is burning.
Yeah, so that's a good segue to capital plan, which is the other part of Saturday morning.
Okay.
And it's a bit adjusted from the prior four-town meeting, so Mr. Roy Clark can join me at the table if you'd like, and we'll try to, sort of run through this. I know this was in the pack and people had an opportunity to look at it. And I think, if it's okay with Mr. Roy Clark, I'll, I'll probably just do a quick overview and then...
Can I give it just a brief history of, of, of what we've been doing first?
Oh, I meant overview of, like structural overview of...
Okay.
Yeah.
After you.
Yeah, so I think, just structurally, just as a reminder for committee members, that as opposed to the municipal budgets, the regional budget, the regional school committee votes a capital budget that goes to the towns. And so that's because we are our own unique entity, or, you know, quasi nonprofit or corporation, if you will, and so what goes in the town assessments comes from an actual vote, it's not a recommendation like at the municipal level. So, one more thing in the...
No, that's fine. I'm organizing.
And what we tried to do this year is take a look at projects that have been completed or slated to be completed and are needed, and try to fit that within an understanding that, one, the town's voted a very expensive roof project at the middle school, and that has yet to be realized because of the MSBA piece that Mr. Nakajima mentioned earlier. And we've got a field improvement plan that we all hope is coming and hopefully is supported by our town. So we have two really significant financial commitments coming up. So what we tried to do is, what we legally had to do, such as ADA upgrades, we have now a, not just a moral, but a legal commitment to work on those, and try to get ahead of some of the things that really about health, safety, and, and the condition of the schools long-term. These schools are older and they're not going anywhere anytime soon, so trying to think about what do we need to do now and what can be pushed off a year or two, knowing that there's some big expenses on the, even though it's been voted, they haven't realized in the backend, and hopefully coming on the front end. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Just looking back one year at the ten-year plan for starting in FY twenty, we had projected FY twenty-one's capital request of about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Sean and, and Dr. Morris and I, Mr. Manzano and Dr. Morris and I met...
You saw now.
You saw now again. And, and tried to figure out what to do with that, and we deferred a couple of large six-figure projects down the road, and came up with a much lower projection in, in our November twenty-first meeting, where we projected about four hundred thousand dollars, of which ten thousand were predicted to come out of a capital revolving fund, I mean, out of a revolving fund. So three hundred and ninety thousand. The document that you have has been revised since then, and I'd like to point out some of the changes and, and highlight some of the things that are a little bit confusing about this document. Sure. Go. Cool. So you'll see at the bottom...
Which page are we looking at?
Okay, so if you look at the spreadsheet...
Okay, great.
If you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see an overview of buildings and grounds of six hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is four hundred and twenty thousand in building capital and two hundred and forty-five in grounds capital, right? Not all of that is, is money that we'd be asking the four towns for. So you'll notice in the notes column on the right, pool infrastructure, ten thousand, that's for revolving fund, so that doesn't go to the towns at all. In the, under the grounds, upper parking lot resurfacing, that's thirty thousand from the revolving fund, that doesn't go to the towns at all. And then, under the fields improvement, we have a two hundred thousand dollar placeholder, but we're applying for CPA grants from the, from the towns. So that's a placeholder, if we get the grants, then that would not be an ask of the towns. So if you take away those three items that I just mentioned, that six sixty-five drops down to four hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is thirty-five thousand dollars more than the original, than the, the presentation in November. So the things that have changed, we added maker space for fifty thousand and access control upgrade for forty thousand.
Should we talk about the maker space?
Uh, yeah, in just a second. And we also had originally on, in November, we'd had fifty thousand dollars towards ground improvements, and we dropped that down to just fifteen for the modulators because we felt like that was the bare minimum that we needed to ask for. So those are some of the, some of the highlights, some of the changes. So do you wanna talk about the maker space?
Yeah, just very briefly, if the current budget holds, we feel like, without adding staff, we'll be able to shift some staff, and, and if you think about, this came up in the building use study that J C J did when it was looking at the cap, master facilities use study, and there, there was broad community interest in having coursework in a maker space, and there was some work that needed to be done to make it safe and appropriate for students, as well as add an egress point. And so their estimate was forty-one thousand dollars. We wanna be conservative and say fifty thousand dollars, and if this was funded, we could start having some courses or some sections taught within that maker space. So sort of the budget changes, we may change that capital, just to be very blunt, we don't have a maker space and no, no one to teach in it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, or it's not a good capital expense. If the current budget holds, then we feel like we'll be able to access that space. I don't know if you wanna talk about the other change? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just have a question. Was there a sixty thousand dollar repaving for the middle school that's not in this list? That was be, in before?
So that was not in the presentation from November, that was in previous plans.
Hmm. I have it on my list. It was number eleven, middle school parking lot paving, sixty thousand dollars.
Well, what do you know? I only go up to project nine.
Ten, ten is on another page.
Well, I just printed out the pages that I thought I needed.
Okay. I just, I'm, I just...
I can speak to that a little bit, though.
Yeah.
Which is that we did do some resurfacing, I'm trying to think when that was, patching, I think is a more appropriate term. I think it was in the summer. So if you, that side entrance, it's not perfect, but it's significantly better than it was last spring.
Okay. I, I just wondered, it, it was mentioned at the last meeting, it wasn't mentioned here, so I'm just asking, that's all.
And some of that was just controlling cost about what the capital requests are, given that the patching, you know, so far in the winter is holding, we're in much better shape than we were a year ago. Not perfect, but more acceptable.
Can I ask one more question about that? Would there be enough in the revolving fund to cover that cost next year if you wanted to put it back?
The revolving fund is a high school revolving fund, so it's a little awkward to allocate it to the middle school.
Ah, okay. Got it.
The fees are charged to high school students?
Mm-hmm. I understand.
Well, that's just because we don't allow the middle school students to drive to school. Otherwise, we would charge them too.
Yeah.
So the, the maker space, my recollection, and I may be wrong, but my recollection is that when we had the conversation about the sort of engineering fabricating course that was discussed a couple of weeks ago, there was, there was an offhanded comment that there was a desire to extend that educationally to the middle school. Is this part of that?
I think in a loose term, yes. It's, it's still under heavy development, and I think we'll see where we get to on Saturday, and we've meeting later this week on this topic. So I think in a general themes way, yes, exactly what that'll look like is working with staff to develop what that program would, would look like. It's not, I wouldn't say it's identical, I would say it's more of the steam variety at the current moment, a little more generalized at the middle school, but we'll have more information to come back with you, to come back to the body with.
Is there like a maker's create space working group meeting on Saturday? Or are you alluding to the four-time meeting?
Oh, no, 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 I, I said literally, I meant Friday, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
I was just curious.
Friday after, right? Get the budgets.
Trying to follow along.
Yeah.
I, I have a question about the maker space. Is, is this money simply to make the space usable, or does this include equipment to go in the maker space, or do we have equipment someplace else to go in?
Right. So it's, the good news in the middle school is a lot of the equipment is there.
Okay.
It's to build a partial wall, because so much, for those who don't know, the old wood shop is a huge space, way larger than you'd want from a supervision perspective. And so to create a, kind of a, a wall that separates some of the facilities area from where students would be, and because of that, it would add to add an egress out, because it would only be one egress point, which from fire code you can do. So in terms of materials, that we would need to think about supply budgets and things like that, but it's a really well-positioned space in terms of tables, and, and there's already electricity coming from the ceiling, like those kind of pieces are actually pretty well in place.
Okay.
Yeah, we're fortunate that way.
Okay, other questions about the capital budget before we wrap this section up? Talk about the solar PV study, and by the way, talk about if it's, if it is logically related somehow to our conversation earlier about doing better planning or sustainability.
So, so we understood from, from Gail that, that the roof was not able to support rooftop solar panels at the middle school.
Right.
And in my experience, limited as it is, it seems to me that rather than invest a lot of money in beefing up the structure of the middle school roof, that we should look, at least look at ground-mounted solar. And so I pegged fifteen thousand dollars in there to try to evaluate and compare the cost of that to shoring up the roof.
You mean offsite or onsite?
Onsite.
Okay.
At the middle school.
Maybe over our parking lots, right? We can do what EMS does.
That's the most expensive.
You mean the most awesome?
Yes. I suspected that would be more expensive than shoring up the roof. But if we use the part of the hillside, for example, that's all brushed up now, it used to be clear, but over the years, it's, it's become overgrown, it's not an area that anyone else is using, and it's a potential solar site with a good southwest perspective.
Okay. Other questions before we wrap? I'm not getting any other questions, so we're gonna take advantage of the opportunity to wrap.
Does this mean I'm excused?
Talk, talk to your boss.
Yes. Thank you. You bet. Just in, in, in passing, the other page that you've got is just a very brief kind of overview of what and why.
You can read on your own. Yeah, it's really helpful. Fevo, let's keep rolling. Whoever's talking, talk.
So it is, the only difference from the last time you looked at it was the removal of a, what's now moot line for, in a prior program. Everything else, based on the lack of feedback, other than that, is identical, and what we'd look to do is have the fees voted for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
That's historic.
Man?
I move to approve the, the draft fee schedule for FY twenty-twenty-one as proposed.
Is there a second? Seconded by Menino. You just had your hand up first, that's all. Okay, any further discussion on the fee schedule? Yes?
I'd just like to, again, request that the lunch program be put on the future agenda higher.
Yes.
It is. We'll get to that, but if you look a couple pages ahead, it, it is on there.
I guess, I guess I'm just gonna ask before we vote on it, when you're going through this, how do you think about the impact on, on families and kids financially?
Right. So if you look at all the increases, you'll see they're, they're all relatively modest. If you look at, you know, compared to cost of living increase, you know, or just inflation, for instance, they're all pretty much below inflation. I think the one exception you see is musical instrument rental for summer, and that went from twenty-six dollars to twenty-seven dollars, which is three point eight percent, but once we get, start getting into change for that, it just becomes cumbersome for everyone involved. So we try to maintain the fees so that it doesn't hit our operating budget, but maintain them in a way that, you know, is not onerous to families.
Your comment is on meals, you try to do...
Oh, yeah.
Sort of rounded changes, like in this case, twenty-five cents that you're then hoping to hold steady for a couple of years.
Exactly.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the fee schedule, signify aye? It carries unanimously eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next, warrant review from school committee representative.
Okay. I have from January twenty-second, an amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents for payroll. From, also from payroll on January twenty-second, an amount of one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. From January twenty-third, from the general fund, six hundred and fifty-six thousand forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. And that's it.
Okay. Like, any questions from Mr. Fanch? Seeing none, let's move on to committee planning. Looks like we have gifts, so we'll get to that in a second.
Yeah. So just, we have the four-town meeting, nine o'clock Saturday, middle school library. February eleventh is your next typical meeting, although that, that meeting, just to be clear, on Saturday is a posted meeting of the Amherst-Palom Regional School Committee. We'll have the budget hearing, just as a reminder for folks, that is separate from public comment, there's allowed to be public comment that's specific to the budget, not just at the beginning of the meeting, but when that item comes up. We'll have the statement of interest for the middle school roof, either discussion, but perhaps even vote, it'll look pretty darn identical to last year's statement of interest with one-year difference. Second quarter budget update, the HR diversity team will be here to talk about their work, both from employment staffing as well as professional development. Warrant review, we were talking about maybe moving the math update to March, just because of the number of items on this agenda, so that's sort of something we were thinking about. There was a request to talk about subcommittee roles. We'll have a school choice hearing, superintendent evaluation goal review, sixth grade to the middle school study, that can be a brief update, and then the last one perhaps would be this kind of green school ideas sustainability piece that we talked about today. To Mr. Fanch's point, food service was on for March tenth, and I think if anyone has any other ideas, you can let me or Chair Nakajima know.
Sherman?
Public comment policy, including time sharing.
It's a good point. We probably will have the committees meeting on the third, so we may be able to have some draft policy at that one.
I'm not saying it has to be the next meeting, but just, you know, somewhere...
Yeah, well, I mean...
I'd almost prefer the March timeframe, but...
Okay. Mr. Fanch?
I would like to support that. That's a really important item for the policy committees to look at. Secondly, to superintendent, the sixth grade to the middle school, is that just Amherst? And if so, what are your plans, if any, to discuss it with the smaller towns?
So this would be attempting just to talk about it for the regional district, and I think the, your question about what happens to the other towns would stem from the regional conversation.
And the policy subcommittee is looking at?
Yep. The two policies that the policy subcommittee is looking at on, at our meeting on Monday is the, the public comment policy, as well as the vendor prevailing minimum wage. is the, the public comment policy, as well as the vendor prevailing minimum wage.
Okay, as always, with other people of other, we have pretty packed... But if anything else comes up, just write me and Dr. Morris, and we'll put it in the queue. Okay, gifts. Anyone in a reading mood? McDonald?
I move to accept the following gifts from Mary Conca number 91 to support student lunch forgiveness in the amount of $67, and from Amherst Education Foundation number 1603 to support Robert Hanley Scholarship for Spring FY '20 semester in the amount of $10,000, for a total of $10,067. Uh, sorry, $10,067.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stanser, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Is there any nays, any abstentions? Okay, 7-0, one abstention here. Okay, looking to my right, do you have any further motions? Moves, there's seconds.
Second.
Second, remember McDonald's, moved by Spitzer, it's non-debatable, all those in favor, simply by raising your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you, Amherst Media for everything.